All right, welcome everyone to our second meeting of September. It sounds, looks like we have a very festive crowd here, which is always great to see. And I apologize for running a little bit late for our meeting today. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 16th, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmenson.
Here.
Mr. Pulowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
President McTernan.
Present. All right, at this time, I'd like to actually ask our esteemed Madam Mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Fagan. All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and 34, Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you're using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session of September 3rd, 2025?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, at this time, normally we do our reports. We're actually gonna just skip them and come back to them after this. It was appropriate, especially as we're running a little late, to do our first ceremonial award. Our award is the Chief's Life Saving Award. It's going to be presented by our chief, Ryan Peters, to Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita and Detective Darren Sliker.
Good evening, thank you, sir. Good evening, through you, Council President. On August 29th, 2025, at approximately 2:58 PM, while on duty in the South Ward of Newark, New Jersey, Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita and Detective Darren Sliker were actively canvassing the area for a stolen BMW reported out of Summit the previous day. During their patrol on South 19th Street, both officers observed thick, dark smoke billowing from the second story of a nearby residence, a sight that demanded immediate and decisive action. Without hesitation, Detective Sergeant Garita alerted all available units and immediately contacted dispatch to request a response from the Newark Fire Department. As he approached the residence, he observed a female screaming for help through a smoke-filled air from a second-story rear window. With no time to spare and with total disregard for his own safety, Detective Sergeant Garita retrieved a contractor's ladder from a neighbor's property, scaled it swiftly, and I mean swiftly if anybody saw the video. I'm sure you saw the video because he conveniently placed his vest on the ground with the video facing the ladder prior to the rescue. And heroically rescued the toddler from the window, bringing him safely down to the ground and away from danger. The woman then exited the window and climbed to safety with the assistance of officers on the ground. At the same time this was happening, Detective Sliker, accompanied by on-duty Newark police officers, entered the home through the front door in an urgent effort to evacuate any remaining occupants. As Detective Sliker and a Newark police officer ascended to the second floor, they encountered a locked door which they forcefully breached. Despite being met with thick black smoke that severely limited their visibility, Detective Sliker and the Newark officers remained inside the residence and continued to shout loudly through the darkness to ensure nobody was trapped, ultimately confirming all occupants had exited the house before retreating themselves. Their actions, Detective Sergeant Garita and Detective Sliker, were nothing short of heroic. Their courage, swift decision-making, and unwavering dedication to preserving life under extreme pressure reflect the highest standards of law enforcement. Without regard for their personal safety, they relied on their training, instincts, and commitment to duty to perform lifesaving measures in a rapidly deteriorating and dangerous situation. For their valor, composure, and lifesaving intervention, I proudly present Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita, as well as Detective Darren Sliker, each with a lifesaving award as well as a distinguished service award. Please join me in congratulating both officers on this well-deserved honor.
If I could also briefly, the Municipal Council of Newark recognized both officers at a meeting. So they sent us a letter today, it'll go in their file. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, officers. All right, that was great to get to that first. Very impressive. All right, we're switching back then to, back to page three, to our report. And as always, we're going to start off with our mayor's report. Mayor Fagan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, gentlemen. We have a lot of great events coming up, so I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of them. This Friday, September 19th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be celebrating Fiesta Latina on the Village Green. It's always a wonderful evening of music, food, and community spirit, so I hope to see many of you there. The next day, Saturday, September 20th, we have our annual Doggy Dip at the Family Aquatic Center. It's a fun way for our four-legged friends to enjoy the pool before it officially closes for the season. The next day, on Sunday, September 21st, at 1:00 PM, come out and check out our new Bike Depot. New being, it's not really new, it's been there for a year and a half and everybody keeps asking when it's open. It is open, but we're going to have ribbon cutting on Sunday, September 21st. This amenity allows for commuters to ride their bikes or scooters to the train station and keep them in a secure and weatherproof location for a monthly membership fee. Ribbon cutting coincides with arts and cars downtown, so it's a perfect opportunity to enjoy Summit, take in the festivities, and check out this great new amenity for commuters. On the topic of biking, our e-bike safety video is posted online, and there will be a live Q and A with Officer Cotiga and an e-bike safety expert on October 1st at 7:00 PM. If you're considering buying an e-bike or have one already, please tune in to get critical safety information. Also, we'll be putting up new signs downtown reminding everyone that bikes, both traditional and electric, are not allowed on sidewalks in the Central Business District. This is an important step in keeping our sidewalks safe and comfortable for pedestrians. Speaking of safety, I actually, we have committed to quarterly reports, quarterly updates from our Chief of Police, and I've gotten several quarterly updates on crime statistics and things going on in Summit. So, and I've gotten several inquiries in the past week or so about specifics on crime statistics, so I've asked Chief Peters to be prepared to participate in my report.
Did you turn the TVs on?
They're on, Rosie. Look at that.
Thank God.
That's the cord. Thank you. Through you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. So I did want to just highlight a few statistics that we generally report to the FBI, the UCR Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics, as well as some other statistics that I feel are more specific to the City of Summit. I did a four-year comparison, I went back to 2022. An annual statistics, I probably go back a little bit further, but this kind of gives us a snapshot of where we are today. One thing I do want to highlight regarding uniform crime statistics, I'm new to this position, okay? It didn't come with a handbook on how to generate stats, so I'm doing everything I can to make sure they're as accurate as possible. That being said, UCR statistics aren't perfect. If you look up the Federal Bureau of Investigation, they say it right on their website, it's not a perfect snapshot for every municipality. There are a variety of elements that go into public safety, but this is the best that they can do, to kind of compare apples to apples when we look across the board. That being said, I'll go through the stats and then I'll kind of talk about how some of them could be a little bit skewed, but again, we're doing pretty good. So right out of the gate, we have violent crime. That's made up of four different categories. We have robbery, we have, I don't think I can make it any, can I make it any bigger? How's that, better? Look at that, 43 years old.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Fagan. All right. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and 34, Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you're using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session of September 3, 2025?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this time, normally we do our reports. We're actually gonna just skip them and come back to them after this. It was appropriate, particularly as we're running a little late, to do our first ceremonial award. Our award is the Chief's Life Saving Award. It's going to be presented by our chief, Ryan Peters, to Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita and Detective Darren Sliker.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. Fuzzier than usual. Good evening. Through you, Council President. On August 29, 2025, at approximately 2:58 p.m., while on duty in the South Ward of Newark, New Jersey, Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita and Detective Darren Sliker were actively canvassing the area for a stolen BMW reported out of Summit the previous day. During their patrol on South 19th Street, both officers observed thick, dark smoke billowing from the second story of a nearby residence, a sight that demanded immediate and decisive action. Without hesitation, Detective Sergeant Garita alerted all available units and immediately contacted dispatch to request a response from the Newark Fire Department. As he approached the residence, he observed a female screaming for help through a smoke-filled air from a second-story rear window. With no time to spare and with total disregard for his own safety, Detective Sergeant Garita retrieved a contractor's ladder from a neighbor's property, scaled it swiftly, and I mean swiftly if anybody saw the video. I'm sure you saw the video because he conveniently placed his vest on the ground with the video facing the ladder prior to the rescue. And heroically rescued the toddler from the window, bringing him safely down to the ground and away from danger. The woman then exited the window and climbed to safety with the assistance of officers on the ground. At the same time this was happening, Detective Sliker, accompanied by on-duty Newark police officers, entered the home through the front door in an urgent effort to evacuate any remaining occupants. As Detective Sliker and a Newark police officer ascended to the second floor, they encountered a locked door which they forcefully breached. Despite being met with thick black smoke that severely limited their visibility, Detective Sliker and the Newark officers remained inside the residence and continued to shout loudly through the darkness to ensure nobody was trapped, ultimately confirming all occupants had exited the house before retreating themselves. Their actions, Detective Sergeant Garita and Detective Sliker, were nothing short of heroic. Their courage, swift decision-making, and unwavering dedication to preserving life under extreme pressure reflect the highest standards of law enforcement. Without regard for their personal safety, they relied on their training, instincts, and commitment to duty to perform lifesaving measures in a rapidly deteriorating and dangerous situation. For their valor, composure, and lifesaving intervention, I proudly present Detective Sergeant Rudy Garita, as well as Detective Darren Sliker, each with a lifesaving award as well as a distinguished service award. Please join me in congratulating both officers on this well-deserved honor. If I could also briefly, the municipal council of Newark recognized both officers at a meeting. So they sent us a letter today. It'll go in their file. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, officers. Right. That was great to get to that first. Very impressive. All right. We're switching back then to back to page three, to our report. And as always, we're going to start off with our mayor's report. Mayor Fagan.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, gentlemen. We have a lot of great events coming up, so I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of them. This Friday, September 19, at 6:00 p.m., we'll be celebrating Fiesta Latina on the Village Green. It's always a wonderful evening of music, food, and community spirit, so I hope to see many of you there. The next day, Saturday, September 20, we have our annual Doggy Dip at the Family Aquatic Center. It's a fun way for our four-legged friends to enjoy the pool before it officially closes for the season. The next day, on Sunday, September 21, at 1:00 p.m., come out and check out our new Bike Depot. New being... It's not really new. It's been there for a year and a half, and everybody keeps asking when it's open. It is open, but we're going to have a ribbon-cutting on Sunday, September 21. This amenity allows for commuters to ride their bikes or scooters to the train station and keep them in a secure and weatherproof location for a monthly membership fee. Ribbon-cutting coincides with arts and cars downtown, so it's a perfect opportunity to enjoy Summit, take in the festivities, and check out this great new amenity for commuters. On the topic of biking, our e-bike safety video is posted online, and there will be a live Q&amp;A with Officer Cotiga and an e-bike safety expert on October 1 at 7:00 p.m. If you're considering buying an e-bike or have one already, please tune in to get critical safety information. Also, we'll be putting up new signs downtown reminding everyone that bikes, both traditional and electric, are not allowed on sidewalks in the Central Business District. This is an important step in keeping our sidewalks safe and comfortable for pedestrians. Speaking of safety, I actually... We have committed to quarterly reports, quarterly updates from our chief of police, and I've gotten several quarterly updates on crime statistics and things going on in Summit. So... And I've gotten several inquiries in the past week or so about specifics on crime statistics. So I've asked Chief Peters to be prepared to participate in my report.
Did you turn the TVs on?
They're on, Rosie. Look at that.
My God.
Touch the cord. Thank you. Through you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. So I did want to just highlight a few statistics that we generally report to the FBI, the UCR Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics, as well as some other statistics that I feel are more specific to the City of Summit. I did a four-year comparison. I went back to 2022. In annual statistics, I'd probably go back a little bit further, but this kind of gives us a snapshot of where we are today. One thing I do want to highlight regarding Uniform Crime Statistics. I'm new to this position, okay? It didn't come with a handbook on how to generate stats. So I'm doing everything I can to make sure they're as accurate as possible. That being said, UCR statistics are imperfect. If you look up the Federal Bureau of Investigation, they say it right on their website. It's not a perfect snapshot for every municipality. There are a variety of elements that go into public safety, but this is the best that they can do, to kind of compare apples to apples when we look across the board. That being said, I'll go through the stats, and then I'll kind of talk about how some of them could be a little bit skewed, but again, we're doing pretty good. So right out of the gate, we have violent crime. That's made up of four different categories. We have robbery. We have... I don't think I can make it any... Can I make it any bigger? How's that? Better? Look at that. Forty-three years old. I still got it. Violent crime, robbery, aggravated assault, rape/attempted rape, and homicide. So obviously, we haven't had any homicides in town. You guys would know about that. What we trend, typically trend at this point in the game is usually anywhere between one to two robberies, one to two, maybe a little bit more aggravated assaults, and the same with rape and attempted rape. Thank God we haven't dealt with the other category. That being said, in analyzing this violent crime category on the actual UCR report, I am seeing quite a bit of an uptake in the attempted rape category. Everything else seems to kind of fall in line with previous stats. That being said, in doing an additional analysis, it looks as if six out of the eight incidents came from facilities in town that have a duty to report sexual assault allegations. The reason I say that is because I just want to give people a peace of mind to say that although our attempted rape numbers are up, it's not like we have a serial rapist, anybody's running around town sexually assaulting people. These are... These happen in a confined area. And then we'll talk about the statistics as well when I go over the issues I see with UCR stats. That being said, assaults, which is a simple assault, aggravated assault is included in violent crime, are trending downwards, but in comparison to 2022, we're kind of on par with that. Burglaries, these are burglaries to homes and businesses, again, trending a little bit downwards, but kind of on par with 2022. We have seen an ongoing decrease in larceny, which is theft, and then motor vehicle theft as well, which I am encouraged about. The one thing I do want to highlight as well on the motor vehicle theft is five of those thefts out of the nine were actually from dealerships. So they weren't from residences, they weren't from houses. And we have, to date, had nine arrests on those 11 motor vehicle thefts. So our detective bureau is doing a great job. I couldn't speak, give them more accolades. They're doing a phenomenal job. Actually, I walked by the... I'm a little jealous. They're back there having a great time. All of these guys look like all great friends. They do a really good job. They motivate each other. Burglaries and attempted burglaries to motor vehicles, as we can see, that's been progressively trending downwards, which I think is a positive statistic to highlight. Calls for service. I was actually pretty blown away the fact that between 2023 and 2025, year-to-date, I mean, we tend to do 45,000 to 50,000 calls for service. We're only off by three to date for those two years. But again, busier than we were historically. If you look back, we do document more things now. Documentation is key, right? There's no... If you check a school at 11 o'clock and then again at 2, and then the next... And then you don't document it, and then the next morning, we have criminal mischief or somebody spray paints it. Again, we try to document everything, so this way we have somewhat of a trail. God forbid something happens. And then traffic enforcement. As you can see, we're out there. I know this is probably not the most popular statistic when it comes to community outreach, but we are writing tickets, moving and parking, and we're stopping a lot more cars. You know, we're going to get into it when we talk about the Tatlock neighborhood, but it comes down to education, enforcement, and engineering. Not all of our stops, as you can see, 5,610 motor vehicle stops resulted in 1,271. So we're not writing everyone tickets. For the most part, we're educating people. We're pulling them over, advising them of their violations. And, you know, as long as their driving history looks good, their record looks good, they're pretty much cut loose. That being said, there are situations that involve pedestrians, cell phones, some things we just can't overlook, and tickets do need to be written. It's an unfortunate situation. It's one of the parts of the job that I never liked doing, but it's something that needs to get done to make sure that people are abiding by the laws of the road. But I am encouraged by these numbers because it shows that our officers are out there, they're doing their job, and they're trying to keep doing everything they can to keep everyone safe. So circling back around to the UCR statistics, like I said before, it's an imperfect snapshot of a moment in time. Few reasons that is. Okay? So we have what's called CFS codes. So when somebody calls the police department, speaks to dispatch, say, for example, they have a noise complaint at a neighbor's house, the dispatch will take that call as a noise complaint. They'll enter a CFS code for a noise complaint. We then go and investigate. We may get there, and that noise complaint may actually be a domestic disturbance that results in an arrest for an assault and a temporary restraining order and everything else that goes with that. It is then at the, you know, the responsibility, the reporting officer who does the report, to change that CFS code from the initial noise complaint and close it out to the domestic violence complaint in which we finalize that report. That can be done almost immediately, which happens a lot of times with calls that patrol take on a daily basis, like a noise complaint that resulted to a domestic, but sometimes those CFS codes could change a month later, three months later, based on the carrying out of the investigation from our detective bureau. So something that might be generate a statistic on the UCR today might not necessarily be the same statistic two months from now. In addition, we often encounter initial allegations with no further cooperation from victims, which results in the case being closed with what we call exceptional means. The FBI takes victim statements as their word from the initial report, even if they don't follow up with the investigation or cooperate with us for another statement. So again, that could skew our UCR data because we could get an allegation of an attempted rape, and then we reach out to the victim. The victim does not want to cooperate for whatever reason. There are no charges that are being filed because we don't have, you know, cooperating victim. And then ultimately, that will get closed out as an attempted rape without a complete investigation. So that's one of the things that also could kind of skew these numbers. In addition, we've seen this before. Actually, at my mid-year numbers, I got called out by a resident because my motor vehicle thefts were not 100% accurate. Again, I'm new to this. They don't give you a UCR reporting class when you get chief. It's not something like... Chief Zagorski called me in and was like, "Here, let me teach you everything you need to know in the next 48 hours before I retire." So the UCR stats, the way it works is if we have a stolen car from a residence, which we've had, but also that was tied to a burglary to that residence to get the key fobs, that case is going to get closed out at the most severe charge, which would be the burglary. So when I run the UCR stat and it shows me motor vehicle thefts, which it does on this report, and I can submit to you, Rosie, for the record, it'll show less amount of motor vehicle thefts because two of them were actually home burglaries that resulted in motor vehicle thefts. So they actually get closed out as burglaries, not motor vehicle thefts. So it's incumbent on us and the detective bureau to keep... Have accurate record-keeping inside our own management system, separate from the UCR management system. In addition, we... Again, we see this a lot with sexual assault allegations. There's a delay in reporting. You know, we understand that, you know, a lot of these events are, you know, traumatic. Oftentimes, they involve juveniles, and they're not reported for years later, which could skew the stats. An assault can occur in 2020, 2021, and it's reported in 2025, and that's when the stat gets recorded. And lastly, Summit Police Department did 48,952 calls for service. While the men and women of the police department that were just in here do a very good job at making sure the CFS codes are as accurate as possible, I would be, you know, I wouldn't be 100% truthful if I said we were perfect all the time. Out of the 49,000 calls roughly, there are a few cases, and it used to drive the old captains crazy if the CFS code wasn't right. We have checks and balances, but there are a few that every once in a while, at the end of the year, you might have a small percentage, a margin of error, where the CFS code might not be 100% accurate because it just wasn't closed out properly. So that's the story, and I'm sticking to it unless anybody has any questions. Open to questions? Analysis?
Council President.
Anything else?
Yes, please.
Councilmember.
So Chief, we have the hospital, we have Fair Oaks, you know, some other facilities in town. How many of these violent crimes and assaults occur there?
Aggravated assaults to date? Any of the aggravated assaults? I think actually, well, no, I'm not... We'll be mistaken. So again, to date, the violent crime, we are at 16. Of that, we have zero homicides. We had seven attempted rape allegations. We had two robberies. I think you're intimately familiar with one of those. And we had two aggravated assaults to date. I believe one of those aggravated assaults did occur at a... At one of the facilities in town.
And there's two separate categories, right? Violent crime and a simple assault.
Yep.
So the simple assaults, and how many of those?
A lot of those are actually tied to domestic disturbances, which is why we don't do... So again, when we talk about notifications to the public, we deal with a lot of issues with the police department. We go in people's houses. Sometimes we see the worst of the worst. So there are certain statistics that while we do try to be as transparent as possible, we also need to take into account the privacy of someone's home. You know, we've seen an uptick in mental... I talked about this when the previous stats were put out. We have seen an uptick in mental health issues. We've seen an uptick in domestic violence. And unfortunately, we've actually seen an uptick this year in suicide. And that's what, you know, our guys see on a daily... Our guys and gals, they see that they're on the front lines. They see this stuff. It is traumatic. But, you know, oftentimes, I get inquiries from people in the neighborhood, "Hey, what's going on at my neighbor's house? There's three or four police cars." And sometimes it's just, unfortunately, it's not really anybody's business. I can tell you, if there is a threat to the public, if we're looking for someone, if there's something that the public needs to know, the information's going out. I was on my way to... We talked about this in the safety meeting. I was on my way to Wegmans last Sunday to go food shopping, and we had a missing juvenile that went out. You know, within a matter of seconds, I'm on the phone with the supervisor. We're getting that information out, and it was on social media, and Nixles were out almost immediately. And I live in Monmouth County. So... And there's checks and balances. I'm the primary. We have alternates. We have several lines of communication to make sure that the frontline supervisors, who are often dealing with the problems at hand in front of them, right? So their primary responsibility is to handle the problems right in front of them, but also make notification to us in case we need the public's help in finding someone who's missing, or in case we need the public's help in just locating a suspect, or just advising them, "Hey, this is what we just had. We just had a criminal attempt to a motor vehicle. Everybody be vigilant. Everybody keep your eyes on your Ring cameras, keep your eyes on your vehicles, lock your cars." And we're doing it. But I do want to be mindful of people's privacy. Do want to be mindful that some of these statistics are a reflection of domestic violence. They are a reflection of stuff that happens in the privacy of people's homes, and we try to respect that as best we can.
Thank you, Chief. And last question, because, you know, I'd like the residents to really understand this. When we look at violent crimes and assaults, they are not typically happening on our streets. Our streets are safe. There is no proactive way to stop domestic violence or assaults that happen in hospitals or facilities that have people with mental health issues. But our streets are safe. These statistics do not reflect what's happening.
And that's exactly what it says, actually, on the FBI's website when you go to Uniform Crime Reporting, that these statistics are imperfect. However, they're the best we got at the time because you do have to consider other factors. You know, I don't want to talk about any other municipalities, but there's municipalities that might have a shopping mall in there. You're going to see an increase in thefts in those municipalities because that's a direct reflection of what happens at shopping malls. And to your point, we have all different types of facilities in town that could drive numbers one way or another.
So parents, it's okay if you still send your kids to the town to get candy and stuff? It's sweet nothings. It's all good.
All right. I don't know if the dentist would approve of that, but...
Any other comments or questions for the chief? Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. Chief, thank you very much for your report. Again, could you just go over the... Just maybe even just some of the major categories of violent crime?
Yeah, so it's homicide, robbery, aggravated assault, and rape/attempted rape. So those are the four categories that go into violent crime.
Okay.
And like I said, the anomaly, I saw the number go up, and I was intrigued. And the number that's... I see at least for 2025 that's driving this number higher than usual is the attempted rape.
And those 16 that we have so far, are those typically within the home?
Well, like I said, with the allegations of rape, six out of eight came from institutions in town that have a duty to report.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tove?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief. I know we're all happy to see the numbers of car thefts and attempted car thefts and all that going down. I know the department has been involved for some time with county-wide task forces. Is this... Are we seeing this throughout the area?
Yes, I believe so. I believe the... I think the coordinated effort among not only, you know, local stakeholders, but county, state, federal authorities coming together. Information sharing is huge. Technology is huge. You know, with the license plate readers, the state police got on board, and now we have access to, you know, license plate information from all the different jurisdictions. So the fact that we're sharing information, we're working together, there's regional task force, we participate in those task force. Anytime anybody reaches out for an officer to participate in a task force, we send them. We do what we can because, at the end of the day, we've had... We've benefited from that. I think the first deployment for the Union County Task Force for Major Crimes was in Summit because we were in the midst of a major stolen car theft ring. So... But yeah, to your point, I do feel as if crime statistics across the board are trending in that direction, and it's encouraging. I really... I do think it's encouraging, and I think technology plays a big part. I think information sharing plays a big part. I think boots on the ground. I think there's a variety of factors that go into that.
Other comments? Councilman Palowski?
So how many... How many of the stolen cars did we retrieve?
Almost all of them, I think. I'd have to pull that... I'd have to pull the spreadsheet, which I don't have on this computer, but I'd say the vast majority. I mean, you just saw the two guys that got the awards for down in Newark. That's not something we take lightly. The vehicles taken from a residence or even a dealership here in town, you know, the full force of the detective bureau is usually in the areas where we tend to find these vehicles, whether they're getting cooled off or they're staged or, you know, waiting to go on a container overseas. So we do recover the vast majority of them. To date, I don't know. Out of the 11, if I had to take a guess, I'd say eight were recovered. Again, we had nine arrests, so, you know, they're out there. One of the things, and we do the same thing with criminal mischief, if somebody spray paints the side of a building, we get it cleaned up the next day. It's the broken windows theory. If every time you come to Summit, not only are you met with police resistance because our notifications through the technology we've invested in, but you steal a car and the next day, that car's back on the flatbed and it's back up at Summit eventually, again, we're not solving the world's problems here, and I certainly don't want to invite crime into any other jurisdiction, but they're going to stop coming to Summit if every time they steal a car, it gets scooped back up. What benefit did they get? They're running a possible second or third degree charge for 12 hours, and then the car's gone. So we don't take that lightly. I do know there are other police departments that don't go down to these areas in Essex County due to, you know, we've had officers encounter life-threatening experiences while processing in a car in Essex County. So it's... And we just had two officers nearly die in a fire. I mean, we're out there. We're not... We're not going to sit back and just let this happen. So every time a car does get stolen, we're actively looking for it. We're actively tracking. We are dealing with a criminal element that knows how to remove these trackers. They know where to hide it. So it is a little bit of a game of cat and mouse. We were on the... We were on the tail of that BMW when they came across the house fire that afternoon, which has since been recovered, by the way.
So I would thank you for empowering our officers to go and do that, even though not every municipality does. And in addition to Officers Garita and Sliker, that empowerment, you know, allowed them to save a woman and her child, so well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
That's it?
Thank you. Yeah, no, one other thing I do want you to speak to if we have time.
Yeah, please.
Sorry, is...
I had the over-under at 10 o'clock. I think I'm going to lose.
Oh, boy. Is just the measures that you guys have implemented around the Tatlock neighborhood because I've gotten some good feedback about the first home football game this past weekend, and I just wanted to kind of air some of that.
Yeah, so that was... That was interesting, getting sworn in as the new chief, like the week of our lacrosse game, making the finals and the complete chaos down at the... I wouldn't call it chaos, but, you know, controlled chaos down at Tatlock Field in the spring. So we've heard the residents. We understand that there are some safety concerns from residents, whether it be the size of the roadway, whether it be the parking, crosswalks, stop signs. So we're approaching it the same way we approach most traffic problems, the three Es, right?[1616.27] The three Es, right? Education, enforcement, and engineering, right? So, education, we've been putting out a lot of messaging. I'm sure you guys follow us on social media, even getting the Nixles the other day, working with the Board of Education and Allison Flockhart, she's been great, putting notifications out to parents, putting notifications out to opposing jurisdictions and high schools to let them know that the police will be out. We are enforcing parking, zero discretion. In addition to that, you know, that messaging, I sat down with Allison and Lieutenant Daly of our Traffic Safety Bureau, and we came up with a plan for drop-off pickup for the buses that we feel is safe. And then in the interim, we're posting no park, temporary no parking signs, specifically in the areas that have drew some concern from the residents, you know, within 25 feet of a crosswalk, within 50 feet of a stop sign on roads that are narrow. So, I do apologize on behalf of the Police Department that some of these no parking signs are still out there. They're only a temporary fix. You know, on the Safety Committee, we're looking for permanent solutions, because at the end of the day, putting no parking signs up, taking them back, putting them out, that's, those are temporary solutions, right? So, we're looking for permanent solutions. But in the interim, we understand that these are safety concerns, so we're leaving them out there for now. So, I would expect to see the temporary no parking signs. Like I said, on the enforcement aspect, we are out there. Officers are working security. We have other officers patrol the neighborhoods, writing parking tickets, I think on Saturday's game. I don't want to, you know, overdo it, but I think we wrote north of 22, 25 tickets. And again, that's not what we want to do. We don't want a parent or a family to be leaving a game where their child just had the game of their life and show up to the parking ticket on their windshield, you know, compliments of the Summit Police Department. Do not want to do that. But at the end of the day, these residents have the right to have a safe neighborhood, and we need to make sure that that's enforced. And then again, we'll continue to work with the Engineering Department to make sure that the measurements on the roads are safe and that certain signage or maybe, you know, restriping of the roads can accommodate or at least paint a clearer picture on where you can and cannot park. And then, once those permanent solutions are put into place, we can remove all the ugly no parking signs and kind of hopefully get back to business as usual. But I'm always open to suggestions. Again, you know, I don't consider myself an expert on anything, but I do like to put the work in, and I'm happy to hear people's recommendations. And again, being as transparent as possible, we're trying to present these ideas to the residents to make sure that they're okay with them before we implement anything. And again, we're working with Engineering on that as well.
Chief?
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer?
Last thing, because I think the taxpayers want to know this, because we just got two new officers, right? Well, we have, we have a bunch of new officers.
We're in the process of hiring two more.
Right? And we're in the process of hiring two more. Can you just, A, talk about the new officers that we just hired throughout the year? Because I think there's five or six new officers.
We have quite a few officers, yes.
And then, and then the impact of the two new positions that you have on your force?
So, again, we have some flexibility now that we have the additional staffing. You know, an old-school mentality might be just to put them into patrol, more rubber on the road. We are patrolling north of 80 miles of roadway at any given time, believe it or not, even though we're six square miles, 80 miles of roadway. I'd rather not go public with how many officers are on the road at any given time, but we are looking to create new positions. We did one already. It's a hybrid position. You know, the officer lives in town, so he has access to all different types of uniforms. So, the hybrid position essentially can backfill patrol if we need it for overtime. If not, he can assist the community policing unit, the Detective Bureau, and if all else fails and everything's kind of running smoothly, we put the hybrid officer in the Central Business District, and we make sure that pedestrian safety and parking and everything else is being enforced. So, we're looking to expand upon that unit and do another hybrid officer, and then also add a second officer into the Traffic Bureau, because traffic is obviously one of our main concerns.
Councilman Palowski?
One follow-up on the parking down at Tatlock during football games. In the past, we have asked Matt Defonzo, who does all the announcing, I think he still does.
I think they did that this past game, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. Yep, that's part of the communication. We're doing that as well.
And so, he knew what I was going to say, but what I was going to say was that we make announcements during the game. If you're illegally parked, please go move your car. You won't be ticketed.
And you forgot to mention the mobile billboard on the...
Oh, yeah, the mobile billboard that's on the corner of Butler and Morris, which possibly working with the Board of Ed, maybe getting a permanent sign there.
Great. Councilwoman Cammelson?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Peters, for all of your work. I've definitely seen an improvement, so, thank you. We appreciate it.
I'm happy to hear that.
I just wanted to expand on something a little bit. You said, you know, that you've heard the residents and they deserve a safe neighborhood, and I agree with that. It's not just the residents that live there, though. It's also the spectators and their safety, because residents identify that it's not, it's not just the people who live there. We see who's walking in the middle of the street, who's trying to cross the street. We witness cars almost, you know, run into each other head-on when the, when cars are parked on the both sides. So, I just wanted to point out that it's also, it's in the best interest of everyone, including the spectators. And that's, you know, it's concern for residents and for spectators. Thank you.
Just one final question.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thanks, Council President. In regards to the buses, do we have a formal memo put out to the Board of Ed that they are to direct the buses to go a certain route?
Allison Flockhart generated instructional guidance to all opposing schools that are coming in on what the current process is, which is a loading and unloading zone on Butler, where we've coned off areas. One of the issues with that, from what was relayed to me, was the buses would drop off on Butler Parkway. They would then go stage either at the high school or Washington School, and when they came back, those parking spots were then since filled because it was, it was a parking area. And that, you know, then teams tended to be loading on the buses while the bus was idle in the middle of the road. So, again, a temporary fix for now, we're working on permanent solutions, was to just cone off an area big enough for two or three buses. Bus drop-off pickup only. They're doing the same thing. They're dropping off, they're going up to the high school, and that's the instructions that she's giving all the opposing schools that are coming to town. So, yeah, I have access to that. I can send it to Council, so you guys can take a look at it. But Allison did a great job on putting that out there, and she also reiterated the fact that we will be enforcing with very little discretion, so.
One quick comment. So, Chief, from what you guys have learned from this, are there any things that you are planning to tweak for the next home game?
So, for the next home game, one of the things that we didn't do this past time was we didn't reinforce current no parking signs. There are no parking signs between the entrance to Tatlock and the little turnaround at Washington School before Morris Avenue. They're there. I don't know why people don't see them, but I talked to Sergeant Brunetto in real time on Saturday, and he's like, hey, we're out here, we're moving cars, and more cars are parked. So, we're going to double down. I think on Aubrey as well, there's some no parking signs that probably could use some extra reinforcement. But again, when we talk about the three Es, we'll work with Engineering to make sure that whatever signs are up there, I know one of the signs needs to be either replaced or repainted, so, you know, we'll be doing that as well. And then, I think if the first game went okay, we'll continue as on course and go from there.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And before I close out my comments, sorry that I usually don't speak this much, but I just wanted to thank everybody who came to the 9/11 memorial at the firehouse. As always, it's a tough day, and we remember all that we lost, but I especially remember how unified our community was. Sort of a poignant reminder of that. And we've always been a compassionate, respectful community, helps one another, and Summit is an example, a beacon, if you will, to surrounding neighborhoods and other communities in so many ways. And, you know, it's because we work together and we support one another, and I just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone, to remind me, to remind all of us, that kindness and neighborliness should always come above all else. And we can disagree, but we need to do so respectfully. And just remember that this is what makes Summit special. We're neighbors, we're friends. And again, I don't agree with everything my best friend thinks or says, but we can always have a dialogue that's kind and compassionate and respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Good comments. All right, boy.
Sorry.
We're still on reports. City Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
I do. Thank you, Council President. Not nearly as fun as the previous reports, but the Dog Park. The temporary Dog Park will remain at the Village Green until October 6. I think many of you have been enjoying it, and we thank the hundreds of people who have given their feedback about a new Dog Park location. Their survey is still open at cityofsummit.org/dogparksurvey. So, please continue to provide your feedback, if you will. And public service, energy and gas, milling and paving, seems like they are everywhere. Be advised that they are performing milling and paving throughout Summit this week. The schedule is available on the homepage of the city website and at cityofsummit.org/construction. Earlier this afternoon, we received a new schedule for the rest of the week, so the website has been updated with that new information, so you can check that out. Tomorrow, on Wednesday, September 17, they will be paving portions of Sunset Drive, Blackburn Road, and Twombly Drive. And on Thursday, September 18, they will finish up Twombly Drive and also work on Nob Hill Drive and Edgemont Avenue. PSEG is scheduling this work on roads where the trench backfill has had sufficient time to settle, and there are many other streets around town that they still need to pave. Please note, this work is being done by PSEG, and we will continue to share the schedules that they provide to us on our website and social media pages. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Council President's report. I wanted to give the community an update on where we stand for our round four Mount Laurel process. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we closed out our challenge period at the end of August, and the city did receive three challenges. I think there might be some confusion amongst the public on whether they're lawsuits or challenges. I'm not a lawyer, but we pay our lawyer a lot of money, and they're called challenges. I would suggest, don't take legal advice from people on Facebook. It's not a good idea. But we are being challenged. We're being challenged by two developers, as I mentioned, that we did not allow to join our plan. One developer wanted to put a project down on River Road that was vetted at the Planning Board for 200 units. Ultimately, the city said that was not consistent with our current zoning, and so it was rejected. The second developer, we didn't even bother to send to the Planning Board because it was so out of scope with our community. He proposed an eight-story apartment building on the corner of Broad Street and Summit Avenue, where the Conoco Station is. 300 units, eight stories. Let that sink in a little bit. The only way not to have those two developers not challenge us would have been to say okay. They were going to challenge us. This is part of the process. So, for people who are like, oh, my gosh, you're being challenged, the alternative is we, they'd be doing design plans right now for an eight-story building with 300 units. So, again, we're going to work through the process. Fair Share also challenged us. They challenged 400-odd communities, and we'll deal with that. Going forward, which is the important part, the city has a mediation schedule with an adjudicator that was assigned to us and many other cities for September 29. The goal of this mediation center, mediation meeting, according to what's laid out in the legislation, is for us to try and come to some agreements with the challengers on whether or not to include part or some part of them in their plan, and then we would agree to move forward with augmenting our plan. The city also has the ability to say we're good where we go. And regardless, after the mediation meeting, the program, the adjudicator would then advise what is called a program judge, who is a retired judge, part of this process, would then make recommendations, would make decisions on what aspects of these challenges would be needed to be included in our plan. Those recommendations would then go to a, an initial trial court, which is, again, part of the process, that we would have a real back-and-forth with, if there's any other outstanding issues to finally be settled. There is an appeal process after that. That would happen as well. We are, the next, before our mediation center, we are going to file our objections to the challenges with the mediator, because there are many things in the challenges we just think are factually incorrect, and we'll push back on those. We're also planning to file a motion to determine what 25% means in the rule. What is going to be our actual, realistic development number? The language in the legislation is unclear. If you believe Fair Share Housing, they think we have to build 345 units. Our vacant land analysis, which we've used for the last three rounds, says we should be doing eight. And nobody knows. You know, this will have to get adjudicated in court, and we'll figure that out. So, there's a lot going on. Stay tuned. If you have questions, please reach out. Happy to talk to anybody about those things. Okay. Secondly, I just wanted to follow along with the end of Mayor Fagan's comments. Last week, you know, there were, we had 9/11, but also Wednesday, I wanted to comment on this. There was an assassination, a political assassination of Charlie Kirk. It was shocking. It was sad. It was lots of different adjectives. And certainly, I was very depressed afterwards to see this happening in our nation. Now, I truly, I understand this is not the first political assassination. There have been elected officials on both sides of the aisle who have suffered this heinous end. We've had our, you know, current president, two assassination attempts on his life. You know, in our nation, we value freedom, free speech, dialogue. Every single American should be abhorrent at what happened here. What particularly makes me sad and disgusted is some of the reactions to this happening online, where people are cheering this, are happy about it, say he deserved it. Nobody deserves this. Nobody. For speaking their convictions, you may not agree with them. They have the right to do that. I think what struck a court for many, certainly for me, is he was assassinated while exercising what we should all try to emulate, which is dialogue with people we don't agree with. He had strong opinions. Some completely disagree with him. That's great. You don't have to agree with everything. I tell my students all the time, if we agreed with, if everyone agreed with me about everything I believe in, life would be really boring. It would stink. We should have different perspectives, but we should be able to talk them through, and worst case, your own conviction will be fortified, because you had it challenged in rigorous debate. Or, just maybe, if you go into it with an open mind, maybe you're willing to learn something. And that's what this guy was all about. And again, you don't have to agree with everything that he said, but I think that's what's so shocking, that that happened, because we have a foundation for that in our country. I'm hoping that, you know, this could open people's minds to do that, and certainly locally. Like, I think, you know, we're in, as I mentioned, it's kind of the silly season of political back-and-forth. That's fine. We have elections. People should be challenged back-and-forth. It's about ideas exchanged. But let's do it in a way where there's no name-calling. You know, online is a cesspool, and, you know, let's try and be better. We all deserve that for each other. I had a tough day on Thursday, because Thursday was also 9/11. I still struggle to think about that day. But I talked to my students about that and what happened to Charlie Kirk. And what Elizabeth mentioned is sort of my big takeaway from 9/11. I lived in Manhattan while that happened, and I was, I worked right across the street from the World Trade Center, so I saw a lot that day. Lost a lot of friends, but for the three months after 9/11, New York is a city of 8 million people. It was like living in a village. Through that shared grief and shared experience, you walk down the street in New York, people said hi to you. They looked you in the eye. They said, how are you? And they really meant it. It was the most amazing thing. And while that was a horrible tragedy, I took away a sense of hope. In our DNA, we have that ability to act that way with our neighbors. We do. I saw it firsthand amongst 8 million total strangers. That gives me hope, particularly in our community. We're not total strangers. Our kids go to the same schools. They play on the same sports teams. They're in the same plays. We go to church together. We should be able to have that sense of community. It's so important. And that is ultimately what I hope that tragedy that happened on Wednesday brings about, that we can look at each other differently and say, I don't agree with you, but let's talk about it, rather than call each other names, or get someone to say something nasty in a comment section on Facebook about the person. So, that is my long-winded Council President's statement. All right. Okey-dokey. Let's move along. We have a proclamation this week, don't we, Madam Mayor?
We do, indeed. Does anybody hear from DIR? Yes. Okay. How are you guys? Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So, we don't have it here tonight.
It's not until tomorrow that it starts, anyway, so you're right on it.
Okay. Whereas, September 17, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable, memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. During this week, we celebrate our Constitution and the rights of citizenship that together we enjoy as the people of this proud nation. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 17 to September 23, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 16th day of September in the year 2025. Thank you.[1762.87] Thank you.
I just want to thank you for helping us to bring this to everyone's attention. This is, this is a wonderful, and listening to the things that have been going on in the meeting, every one of them, is because the Constitution lets us do all these things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
All right. That was awesome. Yeah, I'm wearing my, my American flag tie. I'm excited about Constitution Day tomorrow. And I was tasked with the historical minute this week. Councilman Palowski has been globetrotting, eating a lot of really good food and such, and didn't have time to put this together, but he just flew back just for this meeting, which is an amazing thing to his dedication. I think I would have stayed and ate pasta for an extra day or two in Italy, but I've got the task of doing the historical minute today. So it's going to be a follow-up about the Declaration, the Constitutional Convention. So bear with me as I read this. Tomorrow is Constitution Day, which celebrates its signing by the delegates to the Philadelphia Convention that drafted it in the summer of 1787. New Jersey played an important role in the creation of a truly revolutionary idea about government, framing the relationship between people and government that exists to this day. The Constitution was not the first governing document the young United States of America had. During the Revolution, the Second Continental Congress drafted the Articles of Confederation, a quote "League of Friendship," as it was called. It was designed by the new states to create a weak central government. This was on purpose. The main fear of the Congress at that time was replacing one tyranny with another. The new government couldn't tax or regulate foreign trade. It did not have an executive or judicial branch. While the new government successively steered the young nation to victory during the Revolution, it struggled mightily afterwards in keeping the peace. Squabbles between states, economic hardships due to monetary and trade issues, and a rebellion by disgruntled farmers triggered a call for a meeting in Philadelphia to revise the Articles. The New Jersey delegation played a key role in the negotiations that created our current Constitution. In response to the Virginia Plan, William Patterson, Patterson, New Jersey's named after, introduced the New Jersey Plan, featuring a unicameral legislature arguing in favor of equal representation for all states, which would favor small states like ours. This eventually led to the Great Compromise, creating two legislative houses with Patterson's ideas preserved in our current-day Senate. Other New Jersey delegates figured prominently in other debates. David Brearley, who served as Chief Justice on New Jersey Supreme Court, led the convention committee that created the Electoral College system, another key compromise for electing the president. William Livingston, Livingston's named after them, chaired the committee that negotiated one of the most controversial arguments plaguing the convention, creating the so-called Three-Fifth Compromise, which counted enslaved people as a fraction of a person for numbering representation in the new House of Representatives. While justifiably reviled by many, this compromise allowed the fragile new nation to begin anew on its journey towards a, quote, "a more perfect union." That journey would include replacing the contentious clause after the Civil War with the passage of the Fourteenth Amendment, which changed the language to counting the, quote, "whole person." Our Constitution, which opens with the famous preambles of, quote, "we the people," unquote, serves as a reminder to the power of compromise. New Jersey led the way during that fateful summer by listening to diverse viewpoints and forging consensus out of those disparate voices, a lesson worthy of remembrance.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right. We're finally on to the business portion of our meeting, and it's only nine o'clock. We have a few ordinances for hearing this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read Law and Labor Number 25-3354?
Counsel President.
Yes.
Before we begin, can I, I just, I just want to thank Lois for coming in. She is my friend, and I'm happy that she's here at counsel today. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 25-3354, an ordinance authorizing the City of Summit to exchange certain real property for other lands desired for public use pursuant to the Local Lands and Buildings Law, NJSA 40A:12-16.
Thank you. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 25-3354. We introduced this ordinance at our last council meeting, and it authorizes the City of Summit to exchange certain real property for other lands desired for public use. More specifically, the city seeks to acquire a portion of real property at the old firehouse site currently owned by 299 Morris Ave Associates. And as consideration for this acquisition, the city will convey a portion of real property it owns, having an address nearby, along with the sum of $175,000. Basically, the city owns several parcels of property at the old firehouse site, but they're not contiguous. This acquisition will allow the sale of contiguous lots, which we believe will allow for its sale at a higher price. I move to adopt this ordinance.
Open a hearing, perhaps?
I move to open a hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Great. All right. I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this time, would any members of the public like to comment on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of our hearing. Would any members of council like to comment on this ordinance? No? All right. The only thing I would say is I appreciate Law and Labor working on this. Also appreciate, Matt, your help and your firm's help for negotiating this contract. I think, as Councilman Palowski said, this is a, one of the steps, a necessary step, to get this property ready for sale. Now that we own, we will own a continuous piece, it'll make it much more desirable for whoever wants to bid on the land. So, thank you, everybody. All right. I'm going to, without further ado, I'm going to close the hearing on this one and then move on. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Community Programs and Parking Services Ordinance Number 25-3355?
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets, and subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance Number 25-3355, as introduced on the last meeting on September 3rd. Most of you know that the top-tier garage is currently closed due to repairs that need to be made immediately. So with this ordinance, we are amending the, we are amending this ordinance to allow for Broad Street Garage, which is at the corner of Broad Street and Summit Avenue, to designate the first 84 spaces in the open top section lot level as resident and downtown employee perking permit, perking permit parking. Thank you. Changes, and we're also going to change eight of the on-street parking from 90-minute spaces onto Forest Avenue to employee permit parking to help accommodate those, those employees who work on the west side of town. You know, one of the things that, you know, we have to do as council members and elected officials is when we introduce an ordinance, it takes two meetings. The first is to introduce it. The second gives you an opportunity, for us, an opportunity to hear from residents. We heard from quite a few shop owners, employees with the original, and so we decided, we went back to our parking director and went with another option that is a little bit more beneficial because we need to prioritize our residents, our taxpayers. That's our number-one priority. Our number-two priority are shoppers and employees. And then the third is non-resident commuter, non-resident commuter parkers. Now, non-resident commuter parkers pay the most and they generate the most revenue. However, we need to prioritize our employees, our residents, our employees, and our shoppers first. So unfortunately, we will be reducing the number of non-resident parking in the Broad Street Garage to accommodate for our employees. And on that, I would like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I'm going to declare the hearing open. At this time, would any member of the public would like to comment on this particular ordinance? Please.
Hi, Dory Gagnon. So I've...
Address.
Oh, hi. Why you have freedom of speech?
I have to ask...
I do have to thank him for that, I have to say. But 20, 27 Bedford Road. So I have emailed a couple times about DeForest Avenue, real concerns, because we can't change CVS parking. Everyone in Summit knows people park there. They go to New York City. They probably leave there all day and do whatever. But we can change the City of Summit's parking. So I know that we're changing DeForest Avenue and making that employee all day, I guess. So I don't know if there's going to be bags over the meters on DeForest. The other day, I saw a man in crutches. He might have had CP or some, some medical issue. He had to park in the lot across the street, the DeForest lot, and walk all the way over to CVS because there was no parking on the street or in CVS. So I let, I stopped so he could, he could walk in front of me to go to CVS. Now, there's no handicap parking except in the CVS lot, which was taken, and there's nothing on the street for him. So here, this man is taking maybe 20 minutes across the street to go get his, probably his prescriptions or something maybe at the store. There has to be more handicap parking downtown, and there has to be something on the street for him to be able to park. You know, I made a, I sent an email saying that my son had surgery and we needed to run in, and there's no parking. So people who are utilizing CVS for their prescriptions need to have more parking nearby. Maybe, maybe we can have like 30-minute parking, and it could be also employee parking. I don't know, Nicole, if we can do that. But some justification for our residents and our employees to be able to use that, to be able to utilize CVS, because everyone knows we don't like the CVS parking lot, but we utilize the prescriptions in the pharmacy there. So we have to come to, you know, this new let-them theory by Mel Robbins. They can do what they want with their parking lot, but we as residents still need to use the pharmacy. And for people who have special needs, need to be able to get there as well, and there's no handicap parking that's easily accessible for them. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Nice comments. Thank you.
Kevin McGoye, 113 Willard Avenue. I have a question about the parking. When the previous council decided to move the firehouse to its current, the new firehouse to its current location, the city lost 180 commuting parking spots. And they, I think, said we would get back 30-something when the firehouse is, was completed. And I'm just curious if, because I think we were going to lose 140 or 145 spots permanently that we've lost, 180 originally. Have we gotten that back? And is that also a part of the problem? Because I know then, what the city had to do was give away, I think, the top floor of the parking garage to commuters to make up for that. And it worked when people weren't returning home? I mean, returning to office, but now that people are returning to office, I think that's probably causing a problem. So I'm just curious, have we got back those spots? And do we have any plans to find new parking places? I mean, maybe some of the property that we own around Broad Street West, could that be a parking garage or what? Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? No? Okay. I'm going to declare the hearing closed, or not, the public portion of the hearing closed. Comments from council? Councilwoman Tove.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I support this ordinance, and I'm only sorry it took three times to introduce a proposal that should work. But I do have one additional suggestion to increase parking as somebody who worked and parked downtown for 20 years. The parking spaces on Morris Avenue, next to the Central Presbyterian Church, used to be bagged for employee parking. And when you'd go out to lunch and couldn't find a parking spot in any of the parking lots or the tier garage, you could always find a parking spot by Central Presbyterian Church. But there, those spots are no longer bagged for employee parking, and if we need additional parking spaces to accommodate resident commuters or downtown employees, I think we should consider re-bagging those spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Gagnon, I agree with her. I wish there were more parking spaces for CVS. I've actually witnessed someone literally park in CVS and walk to the train station. I don't think they actually even monitor their own parking lot. So that's, that's an unfortunate thing, which obviously limits their parking spaces. So, you know, it, with it being a pharmacy, you know, that's maybe something that, you know, we can work in the parking committee to see if there's a possibility to add a handicap spot that's the closest to the CVS, and maybe that, that could be a possibility as well. Mr. McGoye, you're absolutely right when we lost 180 spaces due to the construction of the new firehouse. We did retain 30, once it was completed, we did retain 32 spaces. So those, those lots, parking spaces are now open in the Broad Street East Garage, or parking lot. Apparently, you know, it's just, unfortunately, it's, it's still just not enough. You know, we had to make the hard decision and of, you know, do you, from this standpoint, you know, Claire, unfortunately, it took three meetings to do this. But I think it's also important, the fact that we took resident feedback, shop owners' feedback, and adjusted. Unfortunately, that wasn't done with Broad Street West soon enough. Maybe we wouldn't be in the situation we are, are in now. So, you know, in terms of the, you know, the parking, again, one of the things that, you know, we have to prioritize first are our residents, and two, our employees and shoppers. And unfortunately, the revenue portion of that, of the non-resident commuters suffers for right now. So until we can, you know, we need to make sure that we maintain our infrastructure throughout the years so that we don't get to this point by letting our, our tier garage deteriorate decades after decades. You know, this is something I believe that probably regular maintenance could have really taken care of. And unfortunately, we're at this point that we had to shut it down, and we are currently working on it. We received a report back from ONS, the engineer that provided us the report earlier this year, that would be fixing it. And we're going to try and repair that as quickly as possible with the most permanent solutions that we possibly can.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. On CVS, it's a problem. And it's not just, it's a particularly bad problem on Sundays when we have the farmer's market, because people go and park there to go to the farmer's market, and others can't go and get their prescriptions. I believe we have in the past asked CVS to try and do something about that, and they didn't seem too interested. But we should talk at our next parking meeting about asking them again, maybe even asking if they could put up a sign that says, "No farmer's market parking, strictly enforced, you will be towed," whatever, even if they don't intend to follow through on it. That might act as a deterrent. With regard to other parking options, we've also been discussing the possibility of using our parking lot at the firehouse.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. On CVS, it's a problem. And it's not just, it's a particularly bad problem on Sundays when we have the farmer's market, because people go and park there to go to the farmer's market, and people, others can't go and get their prescriptions. I believe we have in the past asked CVS to try and do something about that, and they didn't seem too interested. But we should talk at our next parking meeting about asking them again, maybe even asking if they could put up a sign that says, "No farmer's market parking, strictly enforced, you will be towed," whatever, even if they don't intend to follow through on it. That might act as a deterrent. With regard to other parking options, we've also been discussing the possibility of using our parking lot at the firehouse, and whether that's feasible, at least until we sell that property. There are 29 lined spots there that are not being used currently. Also, there's no parking on Broad Street right there, because once upon a time, the fire trucks had to be able to get in and out of the fire station. That's no longer an issue, so we might be able to get another eight to 10 spots on Broad Street, and we're going to try to do something about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would just like to say, if, if we could just keep track of these stats, I think it's going to be important to track daily, because if there are empty spaces in the garage that we just took out, and we're noticing that, I'm not sure how quickly we can get those stats. But I think it's important that we keep our, keep our finger on the pulse of, of what this data actually means, because I do think it's valuable to be losing the non-resident commuter. I get it. But I went in the garage on Friday. I know Friday's a light day, but it was half-empty. I just, I can only work with data, and I just, I would just ask that for the next couple of weeks, we're really, really diligent in monitoring this and making sure that, that this is the right decision. I, I believe it is right now, but I think we should just come back with some stats so we can evaluate and make a, make a decision again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just end it by saying, you know, parking, I mean, I've said this before, show me a town that does, that doesn't have a parking problem, and I'll show you a town that's in trouble. It's, it's one of those problems that, you know, it's a, it's a good thing people want to come in and come to your town, but you have to obviously address it. I kept hoping naively that by now, 10 years ago, I thought by now we maybe we'd be all driving, self-driving cars. We wouldn't need parking. You'd just call it on an app and it would come. But that still seems to be several years away, so we do have to address this. I, I would also, you know, parking patterns are changing rapidly. You know, we, businesses are pushing very, very hard now to get people to come back to work. I know that this is a pretty dynamic situation. So I concur with Councilwoman Hamlet. We, we do have to keep our eye on this. You know, last year, we might have been able to get away with really not doing really much of anything, or not, because there were excess spots around. That's really not as much the case now, because people are beginning to go back to work in larger numbers. And, and that, if that trend continues, we might have to do more drastic things as, in the future, if, if necessary. So, thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet, for pointing that out. All right. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to declare this hearing closed. Capital Projects and Community Services, 22-3356, this has been pushed. We never got this back from the Planning Board. So we're going to push this to October 7th for the hearing, after the Planning Board looks at it.
Council President.
Capital Projects and Community Service, 25-3357, same thing. Planning Board didn't get us a recommendation back, so this is going, the hearing's going to be deferred to October 7th as well. All right. At this stage, we're into the ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, will you please read Law and Labor, 25-3354?
An ordinance authorizing the city of Summit to exchange certain real property for other lands desired for public use pursuant to the Local Lands and Buildings Law, NJSA 40A:12-16.
Thank you so much. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 253354. Having completed the hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt it.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Madam Clerk, this time, would you please read ordinance from Community Programs and Parking Services, number 25-3355?
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets, and subsection 7-25.2, Municipal Parking Lot Areas.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Having just heard the hearing, I move to have, I move this ordinance for adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. The other two were pushed. So, we're now on to our ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, will you please read Capital Projects and Community Services, ordinance number 12063?
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Summit, Chapter 35, Development Regulation Ordinance, Article 7, Terminology, Various Subsections of Article 9, General Zoning Provisions, Article 14, Design and Performance Requirements, and Relocating the Development Design Guidelines from Attachment 1 to Part 2 Zoning.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Hamlet.
So I was just making sure which meeting this was at, the last Planning Board. Do you remember? I'm sorry?
Which meeting was this for the Planning Board?
It'll be referred to the Planning Board as soon as we introduce it.
Right, right, right. So we have to go back. Okay. Sorry. I was thinking it was the last one, but, because it goes around three times.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 12063, an ordinance amending the Code of the City of Summit, Development Regulations Ordinance, Article 7, Various Subsections of Article 9, General Zoning Provisions, Design and Performance Requirements. Essentially, the City of Summit adopted a new Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance, or the DRO, as we refer to, of the City Code in 2020. The DRO is a living document which is intended to be updated from time to time as deemed to be necessary for the purposes of refinement, adjust, adjust policy decisions, and address emerging land use issues. The DRO amendments contained herein are based on the Planning Board's recommendation derived from a periodic review of the ordinance. So essentially, the Planning Board goes and looks at any regulations that they think they need to change in the DRO. They spend all year looking at applications and making recommendations to changes. So I just want to give credit to the Planning Board for doing that. They work really hard, and I think they've made some, some great recommendations. So I'd like to move this ordinance.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. All right. Motion carries. All right. We're on to our resolution section of our meeting, and we have a few to get through. First, our finance. Councilwoman Toth, you want to do finance number one?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I am actually very excited to introduce Resolution 12100, which certifies the city's 2024 audit. Municipalities undergo a stricter audit than most other entities with additional requirements imposed by the Government Accounting Office. And auditors are instructed that they should find deficiencies. A clean audit should be an outlier rather than a routine event. Well, Summit's 2024 audit was clean with zero deficiencies, and we should acknowledge the hard work of CFO Baldwin, Finance Director Kobiliska, and their staff for achieving this result. It's really remarkable. An audit is not an affirmation of our financial position. It doesn't say we're doing a good job or that we're not. It merely says that we reported our results correctly. So, our financial position at the end of 2024 deteriorated slightly from that at the end of 2023. Assets and account balances are down a bit, debts and expenses are up, our surplus is also down. None of this says that we're in trouble, because we aren't. However, the situation does bear watching, and we should be making adjustments sooner rather than later. With all that, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second that with a thank you to our CFO for doing a great job.
All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this first resolution?
Just, I'm not surprised.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Diego Hoigargalport. Sorry, Mike. I'm not surprised. Tell me that we have good reporting. I have a simple clarifying question. Where on the website can we find the audited web, um, financial statements?
To you, Council President. I will get it up on the website tomorrow. It's been a lot of activity. I apologize. It will be there. The unaudited is there, but I will get the audited up tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Hoig.
Other comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
Council President.
Yes. Councilman Smallwood.
I just would like to reiterate the, the hard work that our business administrator, Ms. Baldwin, does throughout this entire process. You know, from our, our budget process for the, for the following year actually really starts now, working with the department heads. And, you know, we're, we're in end of September of 2025, and she's already working on and putting together the 2026 budget. So she really has no break, and so you do a fantastic job, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just echo that sentiment to the Administrator Baldwin. Thank you so much. Thank you for that conversation we had when you would consider actually becoming the city administrator, and, and you've done a wonderful job. And with maintaining that as CFO, I don't ever remember getting a completely, certainly my old time on council, there was always one or two things the auditor would say, "Oh, you got to do this," usually small, just to make sure that you recognized you were paying them for something. So it's incredibly rare to get a completely 100% there, "Nope, you're doing everything right." That's rare. And I just want to say that, but it, it, I'm not surprised at that because of the amazing job that you do and your attention to detail and such. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're in, in great hands. Okay, other comments?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Finance, number two. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 12160, and on July 29th, council adopted a series of ordinances authorizing the city to issue bonds and notes to fund the 2025 capital projects for the city, the sewer utility, the joint meeting, and the parking utility. Passing Resolution 12160 will begin the issuance process. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
At this time, any member of the public would like to comment on this resolution? All right. Members of council? Okay. I believe we need a roll call for this resolution.
Yes. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmenson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Finance, number three. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Lieutenant Michael Byrne is retiring from the Summit Police Department effective October 1st, 2025. He's been the lieutenant heading up the Community Services Branch. Resolution 12162 authorizes the city to pay Lieutenant Byrne his terminal leave in accordance with the city personnel and procedures manual. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public?
Comments from council?
Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
The only comment that I would like to make is to thank Lieutenant Byrne for his exceptional service to the city. And we're going to miss him on the force. I know the transition for police officers retiring is, is, is pretty tough, and we wish him the best. May he go fishing on a boat in Florida.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Good, good points. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Last, finance, number four. Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Summit's Assistant Treasurer recently resigned, and Resolution 12169 declares a vacancy so that we can be, begin the search for a replacement. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public?
Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Okay. We're on to Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 12163, Appointing Member for the Veterans Affordable Housing Project Task Force. The member that has been chosen is Andy Smith from the American Legion. One of the things that we are pursuing is a Veterans Affordable Housing Project. So we have, I should say, the Council President has established a committee, and the great thing about the committee is it's typically people who are on opposite sides of the table on discussions, which I think is, is really exciting, to include people from different views, different backgrounds. And I'll just credit Council President for putting that group together. We had a really productive meeting this week, and looking forward to having more meetings. So, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
Second.
All righty. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off before you jumped.
Sorry, I'm going to go again. I have just one question. I know that, like, we have a lot of low-income housing in Summit right now, 195 units per own, which isn't counted towards our affordable housing stock from state perspective. If we did some, and I think it's because we give Summit residents the right of first refusal. I mean, it's ironic because you're talking about low income, not affordable housing. But I'm just curious, I don't know, is if we allocate a portion to veterans, will that run afoul of any obligations or not allow that to then also be counted if we did affordable housing that was for veterans? And as an Army brat whose father is buried in Arlington, I'm all for the veterans. So, thank you.
Good question. Other comments from the public? All right. I'll just make a comment just to address Mr. McGoye. This would be a new, the, the goal of this task force is to create, our stated goal is to create a new affordable housing project that would house up to, our goal is 20 veterans. We're still discussing whether that would be some combination of disabled veterans, veterans with families, and/or possibly homeless veterans. So this is really exciting. As Councilwoman Hamlet said, we're, we have a very diverse group of people who are kind of all pulling in the same direction for this, which is really nice to see. This, we're, we're in discussions right now, you know, how feasible this project will be. As everybody knows, there's not a lot of land in Summit. So where this would go, we're still discussing, and, but there are some possible, promising possibilities that, you know, I don't want to get everyone overexcited, but we're, we're looking at. If this were to come to fruition, this would be an additive thing. So we would amend our, our plan to look to include this. We're having these discussions with our planners, whether we're going to amend the plan regardless because we're doing this. But these are all questions. So this is very early in the planning stages, but it, it wouldn't, the, the, veterans qualify as affordable housing, and, you may know better than me, I think you get bonus credits for housing for veterans. So they count more than once, which is, so it's, it's great for veterans. As, as you mentioned, I think that a lot of people were excited about a project like that. And from a numbers perspective, for this process, which I'm less excited about, it would mean we'd get extra credits for that. So, I hope that answers your question. Yes, Councilwoman?
I think one of the, one of the projects that, I think Soldieron is working on right now is in Tintin Falls, correct? Is that the one?
There's, there's a couple in different, in neighboring towns, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's all.
All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. We have a few Community Programs and Parking Services or Resolutions. Councilman Smallwood, number one, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution, Resolution ID number 12170. I'm very proud to actually rescind this resolution and reauthorize the execution of the grant agreement. The previously approved resolution did not reflect the price reduction of $58,790, bringing the total down from 1.6 million to 1.6 million 49, $1.6 million 49,956 to 1.5 million 91,166. Again, a savings of $58,790, which I attribute to the success, I attribute the success to both Director Azar- both Director Azarovsky and Mark Azarovsky and David Guida at the Department of Community Programs for working on this. This revised resolution will authorize the signature of the Green Acres Agreement, in which this project is fully funded through grants, donations, and previous city capital budgets. I anticipate this council will award the project to two vendors using the state contractor at our October 7th council meeting, and I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, community programs, number two, Councilman Smallwood.
Council President, I would like to combine Resolution ID number 12150 and 12151 as they're both grants and very similar in nature.
Perfect, yeah. So we're bundling number two and three on your agenda, if you're following along. Perfect.
The Resolution ID 12150 is the Hart Grant Program. Through the Union County Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs, provides support for community-based projects in the arts, history, and education. The program aims to expand public access to cultural enrichment across Union County. In 2026, the Department of Community Programs will add a Founder's Day event to the city's lineup in conjunction with a much larger plan to celebrate the 250th anniversary of America. I move to, hold on, hold on. And then Resolution ID 12151 is the Union County History Grant Program. Supports projects that promote the research, preservation, and disentment of local history. The City of Summit played a vital role in the American Revolution, being located along the 700-mile route to Yorktown, Virginia. With that, I move to approve both of these resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on these resolutions? Comments from council?
Just.
Councilman Boyer?
Just one real quick. I, you know, with the second grant, the historic grant, Summit played a vital role in our revolution. I mean, we have the Beacon Hill where they had the light. And I am excited to see that, you know, these traditions come to light and that kids can learn from this and be a part of it, because our history is very important, especially the vital role that Summit played in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to community programs and parking services, number four, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 12152 to authorize a grant application submission for recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities for the 2526 Grant Program and authorize execution of the grant agreement. The ROD Grant is applied for annually to include people with disabilities in our municipality recreation and leisure services. Everyone has the right to participate with their fellow citizens in their local recreation programs. There is 20% local match to state funds awarded. City of Summit matching funds are generated through collaboration fees with other towns and program registration fees. The grant helps to maintain the programs as affordable for all participants, such as the TRICAM program is a great resource that provides the opportunities for individuals with disabilities, and mentorship opportunities for Summit's youth. This grant will build on TRICAM's previous successes. I move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, last one for community programs, number five, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 12171 to declare vacancy in Department of Community Programs program aide. I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, when Nali left, I told you he was irreplaceable. So we now have another vacancy. This resolution will allow the Department of Community Programs to hire new program aide after a recent resignation. This position plays an integral role in the operational of the department as assisting in quality program delivery, department communications, and customer service for the city's recreational needs. This role ensures consistency of staff levels within the department. I move to approve this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving right along, Administrative Policies and Community Services, Councilwoman Calmerson.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 12145, which establishes the Summit 250 Planning Committee and appoints members. The year 2026 marks the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the founding of the United States of America. The Summit 250 Planning Committee will plan meaningful programs, events, and commemorations leading up to and during the year 2026. Members appointed to the Summit 250 Planning Committee are Jenny Hoff, Chief Communications Officer and co-chair, Megan Trindell, Assistant Chief Communications Officer, David Guida Jr., Community Programs Department Representative and co-chair, Patty Miola, Historical Society Representative, Lisa Cant, Summit Junior Fortnightly Club Representative, Amy Bear Shields, Summit Public Library Representative, Dr. Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor, and Council President Mike McTernan, Council Liaison. I move to adopt this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Julia, second, sorry.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President.
Councilman Boyer?
Only comment I'll make is, I was on the admin last year, and we briefly talked about this. I was also excited about it. I'm glad to see it's moving forward. Glad to see that we have folks on a committee, once again, like the grant that I mentioned before. This is really important stuff, and one thing that the city can come together and enjoy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just say that I give credit to Commissioner Tom Arnon down in Monmouth County. So, Michelle, I would say, as I've advised in committee, we've got the playbook for the 250. We may not be able to do everything like Monmouth County, but it's really impressive what that group in Monmouth County has done for the 250. And so I would hope that we can continue to do really great things with this grant money, and hopefully we'll see a plan and admin really soon. And I'll be happy to help you with that.
Thank you. Other comments? I just have one comment or question. I mean, are we liaising, going to be liaising with the schools at all? I know the schools are doing that. Is that a purpose of this committee, to coordinate things that they're going to be doing as well?
Yes, yes. There, we're going to have some subcommittees, too, that break out, and there's going to be a lot of opportunity for people to volunteer. But yes, citywide, every opportunity available to celebrate.
Awesome. Thank you.
Also, we partnered with the ideas programs in the elementary schools to get the kids thinking about ideas around the celebration. And then, so that was this past spring, and then this coming spring, or this coming academic year, they will sort of solidify some of the suggestions that came through the last year's efforts.
Exciting. Looking forward to seeing them. That's great. Yes, Councilman Pulaski?
So to that end, some folks in town may have noticed that down at Washington School, there's an electrical box that's painted with an owl on it. There are also electrical boxes all over town that don't look so hot. Maybe we could enlist some of our young artists at the schools to do something with the 250th theme, you know, bolster our patriotism, spruce up these boxes. I'll ask Elizabeth, because she's on the Board of Ed.
Jason Pino might have something to say about it.
Well, they let us do the one.
Councilwoman Calmerson?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, the one at Washington is not quite finished yet. We spoke, Aaron and I spoke a lot about, you know, how we would love to see the utility boxes, you know, be more cheerful and pleasant. So that's not finished yet, but when it's finished, I believe we were going to try to start a pilot program. And yeah, so hopefully we could see other people volunteer and, you know, beautify the utility boxes all over town.
Red, white, and blue.
There you go. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, Law and Labor, Councilman Pulaski.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 12159. We passed the ordinance authorizing the land swap at the old firehouse site earlier tonight. This resolution authorizes execution of the contract necessary to make it happen. I move to pass this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have one safety and health today. Councilman Boyer?
Through you, Council President. Councilwoman Calmerson, do you want to read this then? If not, I can do it.
Animal control.
I can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. You were on a roll today, so I was like, oh, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 12103. This resolution authorizes a two-year extension of our contract with Animal Control Solutions LLC for essential animal control services, running from January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2027, not to exceed the amount $73,000, $73,500 per contract year. This continues our proven partnership that delivers effective and efficient services, and this was recommended by our health officer and purchasing agent. I move this for adoption.
Second.
Have any comments from the public on this resolution? Comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
The one thing I will say is that this was kind of the only ticket in town. And if anyone out there is watching, I know that there's other animal control places in New Jersey, I would, I would say, hey, submit a bid, right? You know, we're looking for more companies to come out. We want to be, the city wants some competitive rates, right? So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
I would just say, Councilwoman Hamlet? I would agree with Jamelle. I spent more time on animal control today than I care to admit to. But when you look at the contract, you know, we are getting, we pay a monthly amount, and then we're getting charged for extra cats and extra dogs, and it does add up. So I think we're going to pass this tonight, but I still think we should critically think about if there's any other solutions down the road that, you know, I even called former mayor Jordan Glat this morning and looked into whether any municipalities were doing any shared services for this. You know, didn't sound like that was an option, but I think we should still keep thinking about this one. It's a high number. Not crazy about it. I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Calmerson?
Thank you, Council President. We've discussed this a lot at the Board of Health, and they're the only people that respond. They're the only people that respond to our RFP. And it is a high number, but we do need to have animal control. And they, I think it was another town, possibly Plainfield, they just didn't have any animal control. We have to have animal control, and they're the only ones responding. So yes, we would love more competitive bids, but at the moment, we don't have one.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
I mean, I know that, you know, we're limited in terms of number of providers, but is there a way to, I mean, this is a, you know, do we pay them on a per-job basis? Is this a salary, like, are they guaranteed up to $73,500? What has happened in the past couple of years where have we gone below the amount that we've authorized? I'm just, I also feel like this is a very high number. How many cases happen on an average each year? Is this, I mean, is there a way for us to negotiate, say, hey, you know what, there was only 10 cases last year? You know, is there any way we can reduce the number? Can we negotiate on a per case-by-case basis?
Ms. Baldwin, do you have?
Yes, through you, Council President. I talked a lot about this today, too, with several people. This contract was originally done for '24 and '25, with providing a two-year extension for '26 and '27, at no increase for the monthly amount. So, don't quote me, I think it's $5,031 or $5,131 per month for the services, and they are not increasing that for '26, '27, because we are, if this resolution passes, we are taking that option to exercise the two-year extension. They do also charge separately for, like, a cat disposal. I was reading through all the different things that they charge for, cat disposal, stray stayover, things like that. So I do think that there could be an opportunity in the future to look and see if there are other solutions. I know that all of the CFOs in Union County, we talk about this all the time, it feels a little bit like garbage, like, hey, this is the only one out there, and this is the one you have to take. But again, there's no increase this year. And to your question, Mr. Smallwood, about the, about the not to exceed, the not to exceed is a little bit higher than what the contract amount is. And we did not, I looked at last year, we didn't hit it. We have not hit it yet this year. As we often do with contracts, we just put a little buffer in there so that we don't have to keep coming back with every additional, you know, if it's $230 to dispose of a cat, and I have to come back and go through a whole resolution for that. But we haven't exceeded that in any contract year that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Have a second?
I want to pull some things out.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a second. Okay. Who would like to go first to pull something? Councilwoman Toth?
Yeah, I would like to pull the first item under Finance, 12115.
Okay.
Discuss that one separately.
Fine. And Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'd like to pull both sidewalk projects that are big advertisements.
That's the Mount Vernon Ave and Canoe Brook. Okay, all right. All right, so let's do this. Let's vote on the consent agenda.
Sorry, one more.
Another one?
Yep. 12140.
Is that a Finance one? Okay, that's the cancel the property taxes and refund overpayment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so let's, we're going to vote on all the ones that are not pulled. So we're pulling Capital Projects, number two, number three, Finance, number one, and Finance, number 11. We'll talk about those separately. Do I have a motion to, actually, at this time, oh, do I have a motion to approve the consent? No.
You asked for a motion already.
I already did, yeah. Okay.
Need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. At this time, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on those consent agenda items that we're bundling? Any comments from council? Yes?
You're asking for comments?
I'm asking for comments on not the pulled items, the ones that are just bundled together, okay? Yeah. Okay, so any comments from council on those items that are bundled together? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so those consent agenda items pass. Now we're going to move to these individual ones.
Excuse me, council. May I ask just for a five-minute break? We've been at this for a while.
We're so close.
We're not as close as you think we are.
That makes me sad.
Can we just individually go to the bathroom?
All right. Now, we'll do a quick five-minute break, okay? Five minutes. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll do a quick five-minute break, okay? Five minutes. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call our meeting back to order. Thanks for being on time for five minutes. All right, so we do have three pulled, 1, 2, 3, 4, pulled resolutions. Let's go, we'll just go them down the page. So Councilwoman Hamlet, why don't you read the Capital Projects Community Services on the Consent Agenda number two?
Sorry, is this Mount Vernon or maybe?
It's you, Mount Vernon.
Me, Mount Vernon. Can I just give a little description of why I wanted to pull these first?
You're introducing it. You can say whatever you want.
So, just to give everybody a little bit of history, when I first joined Common Council, one of my biggest gripes was that a project suddenly just vanished from the agenda. Didn't know where it went. And I remember I emailed then-council member Jamie Levine. This was in April of '23. And I said, "Hi, Jamie, can you please provide a recap on why the project is off the table when you have time?" Nothing urgent. And she responds, "Significant resident opposition." And for some of you who have been paying attention for years, this is probably triggering your memory. I couldn't figure out where the Mount Vernon project went. Just, we planned for the grant, we got public feedback, never heard about it again. So I went back and forth with Lisa Allen, and I said, "We have to tighten this up. We have to tighten this process up. We're going through resident feedback. We're going, we're going for grants. We're talking to residents. They're coming to meetings." And then poof, it was gone. And now here we are, ironically, talking about Mount Vernon sidewalks, which was, I think, proposed in '22 and suddenly disappeared, and Canoe Brook Parkway sidewalks. They went for the grant, but there wasn't a ton of resident feedback at the time. What we've done is our, our engineer has gone back and asked for a ton of resident meetings, a ton of resident feedback. If you live on Canoe Brook Parkway, I see many of you here, many of you on Mount Vernon, there's a lot of kids on Mount Vernon. There's, I was shocked at how many kids there were on Mount Vernon. There was, there was some significant resident opposition from the Mount Vernon project because of an intersection. Director Schreger, which one? It was the New Providence intersection, correct?
Correct, through you, Council President, with New Providence, where Kent Place meets Mount Vernon and New Providence.
You know, it takes a lot to get these projects moving forward, and you're, you're never going to satisfy 100% of the people. And as a council member, your job is, your responsibility is to think about the safety of an entire town, right? It's, it's not just because one resident doesn't want a sidewalk and one does. You know, I'd love to just pick and choose projects, but the reality is, there was a lot of work put in by, by this team, and the facts are that I questioned this back in '23 when I came off of the agenda. And so I want to, I want to pull these separately because I want the residents to have an opportunity to come up and, and tell us their thoughts. And so with that, I will move on to introducing these resolutions.
You're just introducing number two right now.
Number, okay.
Okay, do we have a sec, do we have a second?
Did you make a motion?
You make a motion to introduce it.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to introduce this resolution.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, do we have comments from the council? Or not from the council, from the public, please? All right, comments from council?
Well, I would just say that there proves my point, that it was canceled in '23 because of significant resident opposition. When I walked Mount Vernon, even last night, everybody wanted the sidewalk, absolutely everybody. They were begging. There might be one person who's not here that doesn't want the sidewalk, but for little Henry that lives on the corner, and Penny, who lives in the brand-new renovated house, there's probably 10 kids within that area. So, again, these projects take a lot of work. I'm proud that we brought this one back. This has taken years, and, and that is a very, very busy street.
Excuse me, I think I missed my opportunity. We're talking about Canoe Brook Parkway.
No, this is Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon.
Yeah. Okay, any other, we'll get to that. Is this for?
This is for a comment on the Mount Vernon.
Okay. I know this has been confusing. I'll allow you to comment. Yep, come on up.
Yeah, it did get a little confusing.
Eric Moberg, I live at 5 Harvey Court. It's M-O-B-E-R-G. With regard to that, that sidewalk and that entire area encompassing the Harvey Court, Harvey Drive area, it does have some assistance needed for pedestrian accessibility to the downtown region. So whether it's the sidewalks along Mount Vernon to Kent Place, and also potentially a crosswalk at Passaic Avenue where it meets Harvey Drive. So, just to help everyone picture it in their mind, if you're driving southbound on Passaic Avenue, you're heading towards the Kings, so Bristol Meyer Squibb would be behind you, you'd be passing the cemetery on your right, heading up towards the light. At that junction where Harvey Drive comes out, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that crosses over Passaic to get to Kent Place Boulevard. The vehicles, there's just, have a good amount of momentum coming around that bend and coming up that hill, passing the cemetery on the right. So between a sidewalk, Mount Vernon to Kent Place, and then a crosswalk allowing all those residents in the Harvey Court, Harvey Drive area to get across the road. Another little interesting fun fact is, in that neighborhood, there's 23 dogs, so you have a lot of dog walkers who are looking to get into downtown. So it would be welcomed by all of those people. And then furthermore, there are students that are also crossing at that junction across Passaic. So I think it would be well-received by everyone in that area. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public on that second consent agenda resolution about Mount Vernon? No. Okay, any other comments from council? Oh, you have a comment. I'm sorry.
El Rampador, Hudson County. I liked what that man said about the sidewalks and the crosswalks. I would also ask that these, all this stuff be handicap accessible. Also, with the signage, for stop for pedestrians. In Hudson County, I have to fight for, for traffic access for a blind person because there's, there's no, there's no traffic light at an intersection. And we also need talking traffic lights for blind people. People don't, people don't know about this stuff because we don't talk about it enough. But we need more accessibility. Please put the last first when you, when you put all this stuff in. And I have more comments later about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Okay, comments from council?
Just one final one.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Just one final one. The residents on Harvey are putting together a petition for that crosswalk, and I've been speaking with Director Schreger about that, so I'm hopeful that you guys can rally, because it's, it's a tough road there, and I see exactly what you guys are saying. So hopefully this will help in the meantime as you get that petition together and rally, rally the neighborhood up.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capital Projects number three, for the people keeping score at home, this is on the Canoe Brook Parkway Improvement Project. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. So this one was a little bit of a different story. The previous council, I think I was probably, I think I was at the tail end of the initial vote for this grant for Canoe Brook Parkway, so I don't think anybody up here was here when, when the last council went for this grant for Canoe Brook Parkway, which puts everybody up here in sort of a tough position because the city went for a grant, and nobody really understands what the residents' feedback was until, most recently, until we had a lot of resident meetings. We did have a bunch of resident meetings, and there are a lot of people who were for the sidewalks, against the sidewalks. It didn't seem like anybody wanted to narrow the road. There was overwhelming opposition to the roundabout. We did change after resident feedback, after looking at all the statistics, from the sidewalks being on both sides, to the sidewalks not being on the sides where it was most impacted by utility. But the overwhelming majority of, of residents were in favor of sidewalks on at least this, we finally got, at least, I know there's probably a few here who are not happy at all, and I, we'll speak to that as well, but this was a lengthy process, and I hope that you feel that your, your voices were heard, and I've been out to speak to a lot of you, and this was, this was a long, long process here. So with that, I will introduce Resolution 12155. So this is engineering, go out for bid ad for Canoe Brook Parkway Improvement Project. This will include upgraded drainage structures, inspection of repairs of sewers, curbing repairs, ADA sidewalk ramps, crosswalk installation, four-way stops. Anticipated duration of the project is 12 to 16 weeks. This is funded by a local transportation project fund from NJDOT, NJDOT grant in the amount of $1 million. And then there's some capital money as well. I'd like to introduce this resolution.
Second.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on this resolution?
I would defer to this gentleman.
Hello, my name is Kayvon Mercedes. I live at 248 Woodland Avenue. That's right at the intersection of Woodland and Canoe Brook. Here to speak about the Canoe Brook Improvement Project, first I'd like to thank the council and the city engineers for taking the time to be thoughtful about improving our community. I know it's not easy. My two daughters, my wife, and I live directly at the intersection of Canoe Brook and Woodland. While we support much of the plans that have been presented by Councilwoman Hamlet, we strongly oppose the plans for this intersection specifically. Currently at this intersection, there are two stop signs. The proposed plans are calling for six stops. I'm here to go on the record that my family and I, as well as our neighbors on the intersection directly, are strongly opposed to converting our intersection to one with six stop signs. Instead, we would like to see a simple four-way stop. A four-way stop is simple. Drivers and pedestrians navigate four-way stops all over town every day. Anything more complicated endangers drivers, kids, and pedestrians. Importantly, a four-way stop is also consistent with the character of this residential neighborhood that we live in. A six-way stop is not. We've been advocating for several months to have the plans be adjusted to include a four-way stop. We have met with the council, as well as the city engineer. We've now been given assurances that a four-way stop will be considered, and that the changes at this intersection will not proceed until the families living directly on the intersection have their input reflected in the design of this intersection. Woodland Avenue and Canoe Brook Parkway do not meet at right angles. This is not straightforward. However, I fully trust that the city engineering team can find a solution that the neighbors directly on the intersection support. My family and I are supportive of the Canoe Brook Improvement Project, if and only if we can expect an amendment later on to reflect our input on the design of this intersection. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Hi, Stephen Peterson, 63, Canoe Brook Parkway, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N. I actually came, I would beg to differ about overwhelming opposition to the traffic circle. I was one of, I think, two people who thought it was a good idea. At the time, we were told that a four-way stop was At the time, we were told that a four-way stop was not possible at this intersection. When I then read, or learned a few days ago, that we were moving ahead with a four-way stop, that was very easy for me to reconcile myself to. Four-way stop is simple. And I actually came simply to ask what happened to make the four-way stop possible. Our neighbors, we're one house removed from that corner, but we're pretty darn close. Our neighbors actually showed me the plan just now for the six-way stop, and I would like to concur that it looks needlessly complicated, and I'm a little concerned about the aesthetics. The comment that the gentleman made about consistency with the residential neighborhood, I think is spot-on. What is happening at the corner that's closest to our house just looks like a whole mess of concrete and signage and crosswalks that wouldn't really need to be there. So I would like to concur that a simpler plan for a normal four-way stop would be completely acceptable. I understand as far as traffic circles go, that in places where people are used to them, they are enormously more efficient and safe. And that the objection, which I heard again tonight, that people simply don't know how to drive in them, I find kind of lame. But a four-way stop would be fine as an alternative. Thank you.
Comments? Other comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Megan Lee. I live at 184 Woodland Avenue, and I was most recently in the accident on Friday on the corner of Woodland and Canoe Brook Parkway. While I don't, I just saw the plans for the first time when I went to the neighbor's house, whose yard the other car ended up on, and he shared with me that this was even kind of like a thing in the neighborhood. And I've lived on Wade and Woodland for the past sixteen years, and so obviously I've made it through that stop sign multiple times. I would just encourage, kind of to Delia's point, something needs to be done, and we can't have like another three years go by with us not making like a decision. And while I don't think we'll probably all ever agree on like the best-looking spot, I think at some point we have to trust in engineers that we've hired and paid to do the best assessment to, and if we don't like that, maybe get another one, but I think we have to, we can't let it just drop off and not do anything else with it.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments?
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. Well, I'm not on Canoe Brook, I am at the top of Canoe Brook, and so I have been advocating for sidewalks for twenty years. The first administration, some god knows how long ago that was, said no. Wow, my children had to walk down Morris Avenue because I didn't want to walk down Canoe Brook. We walked down Morris, down to our school. Now, the topic of sidewalks is coming up, and my children are now in college. So, I do have a dog, and I walk down Canoe Brook every single day, so Mr. Schrager did not include me on these emails. But I insisted that I be a part of it because I do walk Canoe Brook, and I walk to Washington every single day now. The roundabout was an awful idea, and I am so glad that Ms. Hamlet pushed and pushed and listened to me and many of the other residents, and advocated for us. And Mr. Schrager, I'm glad you listened to us, and they're going to put this four-way stop. Now, I understand that it kind of looks like the intersection here at Springfield and City Hall. I think it would behoove the whole audience if we actually put the plans up here so people understood what we were talking about. So maybe in the future, when we have something like this, we can put them up here so people know what we are talking about. I don't think that this intersection right here is bad. You get used to making that right, you get used to stopping at the light, and then stopping and making the right-hand turn. Anything is better than a roundabout, because now that we're going to make the no-left on Iris, I believe, didn't we put that in? So everyone's going to be making a left onto Woodland, coming off of River Road. So if we put that roundabout in, and then everybody's now figuring out how to do a U-turn because they missed the Short Hills Mall, I think that would be a big uh-oh. And then traffic would be diverted, and then everyone's trying to figure out how to get back to the Short Hills Mall. Because you know that's why everyone was doing U-turns on Iris, right? And that's why you made the no-left. I know you did. So, I agree, and I think if, are we also putting four-way stops on, up further on Canoe Brook? Okay, so there's two, three four-way stops going to be on Canoe Brook, which is great, it's going to slow traffic down, and the sidewalks are going to be an added benefit. So, again, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for listening to us finally, after twenty years. I appreciate you, and thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, other comments from the public? Good? Don't want anyone to miss out? All right, any comments from the council on this resolution? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Lee, I did hear about the A.A. accident, and I'm very sorry, and I'm hoping everything was okay afterwards. So, it's an unfortunate incident, so I am totally in favor of a four-way stop there. You know, Aaron, our engineer, is very talented, and I'm sure there's a way that we can square off that intersection some way. I know that in downtown, we have bumpouts. There's got to be a way that we can look at this from an engineering standpoint to square the intersection off. And I know if you're going, I believe, northeast, away towards Route 24, you know, it does kind of the property on the right-hand side of Canoe Brook, from Canoe Brook to Woodland, that area is just not really squared off. There's got to be a way that we can somehow square that off so that it can actually be just a four-way stop. Again, this intersection over here, is it fine? Yes. Does it work well? But it doesn't fit into the charac, it's a downtown, doesn't fit, a six-way stop doesn't fit into the character of Canoe Brook and Woodland, in my opinion. I'm very happy about the sidewalks because I'm very, you know, I'll always be in favor of safety first. One of the things that I really want to stress is I believe this grant, this grant was originally to really help the stormwater management, and as we deal with the sidewalks and the four-way stops, I think, I don't want that to be lost in this project. We already have an issue with stormwater management, so I want to make sure this doesn't get lost in that project as well. And then, the number of trees that will necessar, will need to be taken out, if there's any way that we can do a bumpout, go around them, I would also like to limit the number of trees that are actually going to be cut. Other than that, I'm in totally favor of this.
Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood took a couple of my points, but I've been to some of these meetings, and the familiar refrain for me has been, I just want to make sure that we're taking care of the drainage, especially in light of the trees that are going to come down, which do help with that a good bit. One question that I have is, the current plan has a six-way stop. We can amend that after it goes out to bid?
Through you, Council President. So I think we're using, I mean, a six-way stop would imply it's like a six-point intersection. So, what's being proposed is really to square up the intersection, is essentially a dedicated right-turn lane, so it will have a separate.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. I'll just lean forward. No, so a six-way stop is really when six roads meet, but this is still a four-way stop. But on the two legs of Canoe Brook, because of their angle of the approach, we are proposing a right-turn lane. In two-dimensional plans, yes, I think this intersection here is a good comparison, middle and broad, but what I've referred some people to, it's more like Hillcrest and Summit. It's a small little triangle made out of granite block. Some residents requested we add plants in there. We can. It can't be tall plants, it's just something that, one, we'd have to maintain, but it just has to be lower, just because you'd be obstructing view. So that's something we could do to soften it. We do have blatant stop painted in the intersections. That's not required, it does help, we do it sometimes. If that's overly offensive, that's something we could tone it down with that a little bit as well. And I did promise that we would look just to see if there is some adjustments to the RDI. I can share that it's probably easier coming from the service road to remove that triangle. But I will say what that does is it lengthens the crosswalks because the triangle does provide safe passage for the crosswalks, so I think it would be easier on that side. Could we change it after? Yes, as a change order, but we do have a pretty strict deadline to award this project by November 17th, so we do want to take action. So I think doing anything drastic after we go out to bid would be a little more challenging. Some minor tweaks could be investigated and looked at, and I think those should go back to caps and/or safety, and if we want to do them, we could proceed at that time, so. So in short, yes, there are some tweaks that could happen, so.
Great, thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
The one thing that Director Schrager and I talked about extensively today was, one of the reasons that we didn't put the trees in this bid advertisement, as Director Schrager so eloquently said today, do you really want the people who are doing sidewalks and roads to be putting in your trees? So, we, or he at least, has advised that we can do that as a separate bid advertisement, or perhaps we can get the Shade Tree Committee, the Environmental Commission involved, and come up with a plan to, you know, we want this neighborhood to look like it does now with these beautiful trees, and we're going to do everything we can to make it look like that. There's nothing more than I would rather have than just a plain old four-way stop, but I didn't get my engineering degree, so I'm going to rely on this professional to get us to the right solution. And I know that Aaron, if he can, he will try to make some tweaks and work with the community. I've been down there the last couple of days, and I do understand your concerns with the dedicated right-hand turn, but as I said, I'm not an engineer, so I just have to trust that Director Schrager's going to do his homework, and he'll try to go back to the drawing board, but if he can't, then it's because of safety.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Hamlet for all of her work on this. We have had meetings, we've received emails, some people are in favor, some people are not, but she took it upon herself to go door-to-door and really try to hear from absolutely everybody. And after speaking with her, I do think this is the right thing to do, and I'll be voting for it.
Other comments? Councilwoman Boyer?
Council President, the only thing that I would add is, Mr. Peterson, you and I both actually like roundabouts. No one else does. I'm sorry.
Director Schrager does.
I do. And Aaron, right? That was my first proposal, put a roundabout there, but it must be a Jersey thing because we have difficulty with that, we do. But I am so happy to see this project actually moving forward. You know, it's always difficult when you have that length of road with those many homes and those many trees. As Mrs. Lee said, to get everybody on the same page, it just doesn't happen, right? But I think we got to a point where most people are on the same page, and I want to thank Councilwoman Hamlet and the mayor for actually going door-to-door. Because that was my recommendation, but I was like, hang my neck in the woods. But, you know, but thank you, though. So, Aaron, I mean, with the four-way, the six-way stop thing, it sounds confusing, but I know you'll figure it out, and, you know, maybe another conversation with the residents would be a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments from council? Ah, Director Schrager.
Yes, Council President, just a few things to share that might help with your vote, but I know I did receive an email this week that said it's a rare day to see ten people walking on the street. We had staff out on the second day of school, which in a forty-minute period, we counted ninety-five at the intersection of Hartley and Canoe Brook. So that was a rare day to see ten, because likely you'd probably see a couple hundred in a day. Broken down, it was thirty-six children, twenty-three walkers, twenty-four parents, five bike riders, and eight dogs, which could mean eight additional mammals walking. We did not count them. So that was that part. Overall, for the sidewalk itself, for the documented, you know, comments we received through our meetings and emails, it was overwhelmingly, it exceeded the sixty-six percent of people in favor of sidewalks. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. In regards to trees, I've been using example of Tulip Street when we did the upper or the southern part a few years ago. The plans did call for leaven tree removals, and we removed none. So even if you see on the plans, one, it's to get it in the contract in case we do, and there might be some we just can't and we don't want to, but once we have a contractor, we go out with the forester, and we do try to say, save each and every one we can. If it's a six-inch, you know, four-foot tree, it's just not worth the effort, so. But we will have some play when we go out there, and then we will put many back, as many as willing, as many as people are willing to accept, because we do have some funding, and we'd like to restore the canopy wherever we can. So just a couple little facts before we.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Other comments from council? Just wrap it up. I'd also just like to thank Councilwoman Hamlet and Director Schrager. I know they did a lot of community outreach on this, meetings, presentations, et cetera. And, you know, this is one of those things, we're not, not everyone's going to agree on the perfect plan, but you want to listen, and everyone has different opinions. I kind of like roundabouts too, but I lived in England for a little while, and they're everywhere, so you kind of get used to it. But I do understand that most people don't. So I want to just congratulate the process as well as the product, and thank you, everybody. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okie-doke. That passes. All right, we're on to the first-pulled finance ordinance, or finance resolution, I'm sorry. This is finance number one. Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 12115. And by way of background, on July 29th, council passed a resolution agreeing to permit basically a fundraising campaign for lights at Lower Tatlock Field to be funneled through the Summit Foundation. And I was, I do remain disturbed by the process surrounding this contribution. Contributions to city projects have historically been small and incremental. For example, twenty-five individuals have contributed about thirteen thousand dollars to the Washington Tatlock Playground over the past several months since that campaign got going. And it took the Summit Lacrosse Club two years to raise the money for the lacrosse wall that's being constructed on Lower Tatlock. Here, in a matter of weeks, we have donations totaling half a million dollars for lights on Lower Tatlock Field, and that suggests not so much a fundraising campaign as an orchestrated arrangement. And because the contributions are going through the Summit Foundation, the donors are not made public. We don't know who they are. Second, as former council member Pat Hurley's student suggested a few weeks ago, the consequences of this is that an unelected, anonymous group of well-heeled individuals can determine what happens in a neighborhood. This isn't just about Tatlock lights. What happens if a group of anonymous donors decide they want to change the character of Memorial Field, or the Village Green, or the Arboretum? Anonymous donations lack accountability and can erode public trust in our government. And that's why state law prohibits anonymous campaign donations of two-hundred dollars or more. There are no similar guardrails regarding contributions to a governmental entity. So what has happened here is absolutely lawful, at least for now. And this does leave me no choice but to vote to accept the donation, and to work to change the city's policies to require transparency for any future donations. And I guess with that, I'm moving to adopt the resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public?
Hi, Chantal Landman, Beekman Road. I am a Summit Sports mom, and I support lights on Tatlock Field. I want to make sure we're doing this project in the right way to avoid unforced errors. In the past, whether it's the community center, fire station, or a number of other projects, including the City Hall, almost all of the donors were named. For those projects, people donated to the city directly. In this case, the Summit Foundation is serving as a pass-through entity for donors to fund lighting on Lower Tatlock Field. Here, not a single donor's name is known to the public yet, and we are using a convoluted process of using a secondary entity for collecting. process of using a secondary entity for collecting and accepting funds. Why the secrecy? Why are we using this approach? Residents expect transparency in how the city does its business. If we don't know who is donating, how can we be sure those funds don't come with hidden influence? Contributions of this magnitude might empower a small number of individuals or special interests to shape city priorities without the public ever knowing who's behind them. While I understand the desire to accept these very generous donations, I believe the city has a responsibility to mitigate the risks with this approach. So, I'd respectfully ask the council to clarify. Why hasn't the list of donors and amounts been released to the public like we have in the past? What safeguards are in place to ensure these anonymous donations are ethical and legal and will not create any real or perceived conflicts of interest? How will you balance the needs of the Tatlock community with the interests of these anonymous donors? At the end of the day, Summit residents expect to see clearly how council decisions are made. I urge the council to reconsider the approach for funding lights and put strong accountability measures in place before moving forward to preserve public trust. Let's not fumble this important aspect of the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments?
PJ Engler, 69th Street. First off, thank you to the council for continuing to move this project forward. This is clearly something the town wants and needs going back several months. Just a reminder for everyone, I, as well as several other residents, started a petition to push this project forward. In two weeks, we got over 2,000 signatures, and now there's been a fundraising effort put in. We raised half a million dollars. This is not nefarious. We're keeping these donors anonymous because specific people ask to be kept anonymous for very specific reasons. Some of them because they've been harassed by a couple people who are against this project. I would also share, if you're worried about it, I'll come clean. I'm one of the donors. I've also helped with the fundraising. There's nothing nefarious here. There's nothing, no ties to this, other than move this project forward and light these fields. The sheer fact that we got the 2,000 signatures in two weeks and we've raised half a million dollars, you know, in short time, should tell you the town wants this and needs this. This isn't from some, you know, random or not, you know, nefarious group that's trying to push an agenda here. This is from the citizens of Summit. We want this, we need this, our kids need this, so I urge you to move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments?
My name is Megan Lee. I'm from 184 Woodland Avenue. I had no idea I was going to speak on this topic, but I am a staunch supporter of the lights. I love the lights. I think it is what Summit needs. We need that community, we need life, we need energy in our neighborhoods where children can enjoy, and it can be a place where families are. I do worry that the money is largely coming through this way, and while I don't think it's nefarious, I think, I grew up here, I've lived in Summit my entire life. We all know that there's certain people in sports and Summit who have a greater influence what happens on our fields and who gets to practice where. So I don't think we should be blind to the fact that we know that this does come with something, and that taking Councilwoman Toth and the previous woman's suggestions on really making sure that it doesn't become any more influential in who gets priority and who's playing when and who's not allowed to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Love the enthusiasm, too. Thanks. Other comments from the public?
Hi, Dory Gagnon. I have a question. Did the Summit Foundation donate to Maybe Playground? They did, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So, the Summit Foundation takes donations from all of us in Summit. That's what's so wonderful. I donated to Summit Foundation. So what they do is people donate to the Summit Foundation, and they donate your money as they see fit. So are you questioning, Ms. Toth, then? What, that money to Maybe Playground, was that a nefarious act on their part? Because nobody ever did then. Now, there are a lot of influential people in this town. Maybe they don't want their names associated with Tatlock. Maybe they want their kid treated just like everybody else. So maybe Summit Foundation said, "You know what? I am going to collect the money, and I will donate it as we see fit, so everybody is treated the same." How about that? What a brilliant idea. Stop playing politics when it comes to our kids. We need playgrounds, we need sidewalks. If the town wants lights, put in lights, put in restrictions, put in no parking around your house. That doesn't mean you sue the city because you don't get what you want. Everyone says to be calm and civil. You put out press releases, you say this stuff here. Well, the Summit Foundation has done more for this town than anybody up here has done. So I will say something right now, you're not going to go after them, but I will stand up for them and say, "They've done a lot for this town, and everyone should respect them." And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments.
Governor Go again, Woodland Avenue. I was not going to comment on really anything until Bo will comment, but what Claire just said really grosses me out. There's this narrative, originally when this came, I actually wasn't for the lights because I thought there would be those really bright lights, and I thought it would totally change the environment, and I didn't think it was fair. And it wasn't until the technology and everything that I was like, oh, okay, well, that mitigated it. And then I was like, what are the other concerns, the traffic? Well, yeah, that happens now, and that needs to be fixed, totally agree, but, so, whatever. I'm not even going to live here when they go up. But originally, there was concerns and talk about from people, "This is a waste of taxpayers' money. There's better places for taxpayers' money to go," and da-da-da-da. So they found a way to do this without taxpayers' money. And then it became, then all of a sudden, now I'm hearing all this, "Well, it's rich people dictating onto what the city does," and, like, what basis do you have that on? And it's just really ugly. It's like, you said you needed, you wanted donations, people to pay for this, not taxpayers. They did that. I mean, if we're really honest about this, there's a, the group that started this, it was Michelle Kalmanson, her neighbor, I think, Modesto, and then another one, they started this. They live in multimillion-dollar houses right across the street from the football field, right? They don't want more activity from, I get it, but it's a city asset. So what you have is some rich people, very few, who want to dictate to everybody else because they don't want it impacting them. And I understand that. I understand not wanting the lights there, but be honest about it. And then, you know, I heard while you were running, one of the people told me, "Well, you know we're going to sue." And I'm like, "Sue about what?" "And the lights." Michelle, I have this all. You've seen it. And then it's like, "What are you going to sue for?" "Oh, we'll find an endangered bat or something." That was before the meeting where everything was about endangered bats. I mean, it's unbelievable. So the narrative of all of this is just gross. It's like, we get it. Small group of people don't want it, totally understand, and you have that right. But then to pull in that, like, rich people are forcing this upon, it's not. There's a small group of people that really don't want this right across the street from it. The one was telling me, her realtor sold her a bill of goods, didn't tell her how active the field would be. She didn't get the proper discount on her house. I mean, it was ridiculous when you hear this stuff. It's about the honesty of it. And I think that accusing people of doing what you're saying, political influence and everything else, it's just, it's gross. It's just, stop. It's Summit. People said, "We don't want taxpayer money in this." Okay, we can raise the money. They raised the money. Now you're not happy with it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Mindy McInnes. I live at 46 Glen Side. Again, I didn't know I was going to speak on this topic, but I felt compelled to. I'm curious, this is more of a question than a statement. If there were to be something nefarious in there, do we not have an audit ability? You know, is it just claims? I'm just curious, like, what prevents, like, we're talking real problems? How would you know? That is a question. Like, what are the steps? I feel like just banning it, anonymous donors is probably not the right answer, and I don't think people should have to put their name in. I guess he both sides. I'm just curious, if there was something nefarious, how would you know? Do you have any recourse? That's it.
Hi, Erwin Miller, 5 Knott Hill Drive. I'm just curious, I know that people who live around there are opposed to the lights. I'm wondering, do they, do those same people ever derive any benefit from living next to the Tatlock Field? Because I hear a lot about the, they're complaining about the downsides of living next to the field, but they never talk about the benefits that they get from living next to it. So I'm just curious if they ever consider both sides. Also, I would, I know everyone's upset at Claire and maybe Chantel and everything about bringing up the payments, but they do need to find a way to differentiate themselves because at the end of the day, they agree with the success that Together for Summit is doing for the town, so they have to find a way to differentiate themselves, and so they bring up these nonissues. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Tom Zebra, 768 Springfield Avenue. Just a couple of short thoughts. You know, some of these process arguments that are being made on this situation, they feel like, and this is more an opinion, I guess, than anything else, but they feel like they're just ways to delay and obstruct this project. It feels like if it wasn't a process argument that someone was making, it would be something else. There will be endless ways to delay this by people who simply don't want the lights to happen. I don't know why, I'm not sure I agree with or understand why the anonymity of donors for something like this really matters all that much. And with due respect to Councilwoman Toth's, you know, analogy earlier, I mean, it seems to me that to compare it to donations, like campaign-related donations, I think there's a pretty obvious difference there because limits on anonymous campaign donations are usually in place to prevent corruption. These are donations to light a sports field. It feels like it's very obviously different. I think that's kind of a mixed bag of thoughts, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? No, no, just you just get ones. Sorry. Thank you, though. If you want to talk to us afterwards, that's fine, okay? No? All right, comments from council on this?
Council President?
Councilman Boyer?
Where do I start? Well, first, I could understand why people want to donate money anonymously in this town. Because in this town, you know, people get shamed. They get picked on, right? They get ostracized. It happens, it's real. People use that list to go after people. I mean, being in this seat for the last year and a half, I've seen it happen, you know? It's a real thing. The other thing is, to Councilwoman Toth, T-O-T-H, the easiest way to solve this, right, would be for elected officials to make decisions where people can't influence certain things. Unless you're saying that the nefarious attempt is actually us taking money, which I'm actually, like, insulted by, man. Like, I just, I can't believe that is even, like, that was even out there, you know? I mean, that is like a kind of a dangerous leap, right, to say... To me, you insinuated that somehow that money anonymously could some way trickle down to some of us as a payoff. Like, what are we... I want to thank the residents for taking the initiative to donate money. It shows that this is what you want to do, right? You know, don't get upset that, you know, $500,000 was raised in two weeks. It just shows that this town wanted it. I mean, you know, if it was a playground, nobody wouldn't be having this conversation. It's just that this is political, right? So, that's all I got to say. But, again, the insinuation about the nefarious stuff is just, I think that's, that's just not right, you know? So, I think we're all up here as volunteers, deserve a little better than that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Cammelson?
Thank you. I have a prepared statement, but I also take issue with people regularly defaming online, making statements that they know aren't true, that they've been told aren't true, and continue to do so. And that needs to stop, and we all need to agree that that is not appropriate, and it needs to stop. As far as harassment goes, I don't know who in support of the lights has been harassed, but I know that someone who is opposed to the lights has been harassed with her daughter in the car. Both of them were very shaken after a light supporter stopped and screamed at them. Okay, I'm going to move on to my prepared statement. We should not accept these funds. First of all, we are currently in litigation and need to resolve the complaint before moving forward with accepting any funds or awarding any contracts. It is irresponsible to take money when we don't know if and when we will be able to use it. Second, neighborhood concerns have not been addressed. Residents have expressed the same concern for almost two years, and nothing has been done. They've expressed concerns that community programs noted in meetings that lights would be on until 10:00 p.m. No details have been given on when the lights would be used. The neighborhood should know when the stadium lights will be on and how many evening events will take place before the city proceeds with the project. They've expressed concerns about noise pollution in the late hours of the evening, light pollution, unknown cumulative effect of the lighting from the upper field, lower field, tennis courts, parking lot, and pathways combined. No details have been worked out on what it will take to hold practices after dark, aside from putting light poles in the ground. They've expressed concerns that there are serious safety issues withholding night practices and events in a quiet residential neighborhood. The lack of sidewalks on the field side of Butler Parkway, sorry, lost my space, extending towards River Road forces spectators to walk in the middle of the street. Finally, they've expressed concerns that 80-foot stadium lights and a constant rotation of sports practices will change the character of the neighborhood. Nothing has been done to alleviate those concerns, other than the platitude, "Trust us." A former council member shared his perspective, noting that accepting private anonymous funds sets a dangerous precedent, a precedent where a handful of wealthy individuals can impose their will on a neighborhood. That's what's happening here. This is not a grassroots effort. This is a small number of wealthy donors funding their pet project at the expense of residents and with the blessing of the council majority. It might not be your neighborhood today, but it might be tomorrow. The intent to move this through with the least amount of public dialogue is disappointing. The original resolution to support private funding was introduced in the middle of the summer, when no one was paying attention. Now, the resolution to accept these funds was buried in the consent agenda. This is not transparency. For all of those reasons, I will be voting no on this resolution.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
Just a quick question. If I can ask the city clerk a question. When you're preparing the agenda, Rosie, who determines whether or not something goes in the consent agenda? How does that process work?
Well, there's normally resolutions, the type of resolution it is automatically dictates where it'll go on the agenda. Amending a budget usually goes under consent.
So, anybody on this council, did anybody give guidance to specifically put this in the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Cammelson, I guess, my first question to you is, if anybody buried in the consent agenda, it was our nice and honorable city clerk, and she clearly didn't do that. So unless you don't understand how the process works, we don't just put, in fact, today I put something that was in the consent agenda, a bid advertisement, and I pulled it out specifically because no one's burying anything. You know that. You're in all these meetings. No one on council is burying anything in a consent agenda. Anybody has the ability to pull it out.
That's why we did.
It's Kalmanson.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski?
When we built the rec center, where did that money come from, Tammy? When we built the rec center, where did that money come from, Tammy?
Through you, Council President. That was just prior to my arrival, but I can see.
I can tell you.
There are, there is a grant from Summit Foundation was one of them. And Summit, and I think there were various other grants and fundraising efforts, and there was capital ordinances, so it was a combination.
That was a public-private partnership, where I think the city kicked in 60% or 70%, and as a stretch to make it the amazing place it is. We asked the residents to do that, because it was a big basketball crowd who wanted new courts, and we challenged them, if you want them, let's see how much you really want them. And they went out and they raised the money. The Summit Foundation was involved in that. They did the exact same thing that they're doing here. They collected money from people who wanted to donate to that. I don't know what the percent of was anonymous, but, and they donated to the city. This is not new. We've done it before. Summit Foundation has done this countless times. I would just add, you know, words have meaning. They have power. Throwing out a term like nefarious, I hate to say it, we'll see it in Facebook chatrooms all over the place, we'll get people talking about it. It matters. Choose your words wisely. The Summit Foundation is made up of some of the most respected, professional people in our community. Look at that board. They're amazing people. They know who's donating the money. If you think it's nefarious, you're accusing them of being in on it. All of them. That's incredible to actually make that kind of suggestion. They've done this constantly. They work their butts off to make our community better. I look at this, you know, there was this thing that this is just being jammed through by a few select individuals, and the idea is that, you know, they're controlling the money. They had a petition where 2,000 people supported this. Have we just forgotten about that? The opposition to Broad Street West, I think, got 1,200 signatures. Put that in perspective. And the fact that they were able to raise the money in such a short period of time tells me that people really want this. It's not nefarious. It's a signal that the community is very excited about making this happen and recognizes the incredible need for it. And I'm not going to discount the issues that, you know, the neighborhood has that are being worked on. Chief just gave a comment at the beginning of the council about all the changes they made for the football field, or, not the football field, the football game, the first home game the other day. People are being listened to. And you just can't ignore that and say like it hasn't happened. It has. So, look, as I said, I think we should think about choosing our words wisely, because they do have meaning. And let's not disparage people. I don't even want to get to where Councilman Boyer has gotten to, because that'll make steam come out of my ear. But, again, this is a good thing. It's a good thing. I can't believe we're debating a half a million dollar donation. We must have a lot of problems, or no other problems, if this is what we're going to debate. And again, I'm not downsizing that, you know, that there are neighbors who are concerned about it, but we are, we're working to address those concerns, and they will be addressed. They will be addressed.
Is it still my turn?
Oh, sorry. I jumped in.
As for the incident that Councilwoman Calmenson mentioned, I wonder if she heard both sides of this story. There's always two sides of a story. Next, I agree, people shouldn't be making statements that they know are not true. I had quite a day on Facebook, if anybody was following. There was a lot of that going around. Also, some name-calling. Someone called me Barney Rubble today. Now, I know I'm short, but I'm not that short, I don't think. I'm almost five foot six. And I thought to myself, I always kind of liked Barney Rubble, so I looked him up. And the experts at FlintstonesFandom.com described Mr. Rubble in several ways, including respectful, noble, encouraging, reasonable, responsible, understanding, big-hearted, and extroverted. So I thank that resident for the incredible compliment that she gave me today. Really made my day. I'm in favor of the lights. I think probably I'm the only one sitting up here who said it when they were campaigning. I did that in a Q&amp;A with TAP. And I haven't wavered from that, but I've done a lot of listening on this subject. And to say that there was a lack of public dialogue, I mean, God bless Councilman Smallwood, because I didn't go to every single one of those meetings, but I went to a lot of them. And I even held the meeting myself. I spoke to the folks at David Guida and Marco Zaroski about all the other options that we looked at to fix our field space issues. And I remain convinced that lights were the way to go. I used to be a lacrosse scheduler, and it's difficult. It's difficult. And those practices and games are really packed in there. So, I support this. And, you know, if I won the lottery and I offered the city a million dollars to do something, would that be a problem? I don't think so. People do that all the time. So, I thank the folks who raised this money. Earlier this year, we did approve taxpayer dollars to put lights on upper Tatlock Field, and that was a safety issue for our football players who probably were practicing without enough light tonight. So, I'm glad this is going forward. I'm glad that residents took it upon themselves to make it happen. And I'm going to vote for this.
Thank you. Other comments. Councilwoman Commelson.
Thank you. One additional point about, like, listening to the neighborhood. The only issues that have been addressed are traffic issues, safety issues. I mean, it would be negligent not to address those. Those have been addressed, and that's good, but beyond that, nothing has been addressed.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
I reject that, Michelle. I absolutely reject that. Our city staff is working really hard. In fact, we have asked our parks, our recreation director, to work with Musco, to look at other towns' field usage policies. That is in the works. We are doing that. We are absolutely doing that. So to say we are not looking at a field lighting usage policy, that we've only looked at safety, is absurd. We are working very, very hard. So, in fact, I think I may have yelled at Councilwoman Smallwood today, because I said, "I need the field usage policy for the planning board meeting. I need it before you do, because I sit on the planning board. I'm begging for it." Right? So let's just get it done. We're working really hard with safety, with the residents, with the Board of Ed, right? Let's get the Board of Ed involved. Because that's who's sending buses down your neighborhood, not the city. It's the Board of Ed. Have you met with Scott Huff about it? Finally, I'm in full support of the lights, and I think, you know, a few weeks ago, Jack Cooper, who was the president of the Summit Foundation, died. So the fact that we are accusing anyone in the Summit Foundation, some of the most well-respected leaders of nefarious donations, is unbelievable. You know, these children need to be outside. That's the bottom line.
Other comments. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Well, a lot, I swear, Jamelle saw my notes, because you said exactly what I just wrote down. But I just, I need to echo a couple of things. But first thing I want to do is thank PJ and the group that you worked with to help raise this amount of money in such a short period of time. Now, because you're fundraised and raised a large amount of money in such a short period of time, doesn't mean it wasn't a grassroots effort. In terms of those who want to remain anonymous, would we seriously be having this discussion if someone donated $1.5 million for maybe Playground to be the first AD8 fully accessible Playground in Summit? No. We would not be, we would not, people would not be asking, "Who was that donor?" Whoever, we would be saying, whoever that donor is, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, PJ. Thank you to your team, and thank you for all those donors who donated to make this project work. Not only did they donate their own private money to make this a private-public project, it's also got in their tax dollars. We approved a $650,000 budget line for the, for upper lights. So $650,000, they're going to be paying taxes on, and also donated $500,000. And Councilwoman Calmenson and Councilwoman Toth, you know, I'm really disappointed in the fact that you're going to be voting against, one, Councilwoman Calmenson's own amended resolution from July 29th, which she voted for. We had a resolution, she brought her own amended resolution without sharing with anyone else prior to the meeting, and voted yes for it, in support of this exact donation, as well did you. In fact, I believe, I'm going to paraphrase, "I would always accept money, a donation or a grant to the city." To address some of the concerns from the five meetings that we held with just the Tatlock neighbors, Michelle, if addressing safety and traffic and parking issues isn't the number-one thing to address, I don't know what is. And that's been taken care of. We just heard from our police, our chief of police. I took a video of Butler Parkway this, on Saturday, because I wanted to make sure that the implementation of no parking on one side of the street was being done. However, I did see one car on that side of the street. Three years ago, during sporting events, there were cars parked on both sides of the street, and the buses, the traveling buses, the traveling team buses were parked directly in front of your house. We've addressed that. If that's not the most important thing, I don't know what else is. Yes, do RDPW and the BOE, Board of Education, need to work together on picking up the trash quicker after an event? But unfortunately, safety and traffic and parking came first. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. This project has been going on since prior to 2018, which is when the actual present, first presentation, when Councilman McTernan was on council. And I remember distinctly, because I went back and watched that meeting, he was sitting right over there where Bob is, and he said, "Have you met with the residents?" And they said, "No." I was elected in 2023, installed in January of 2024, and on February 7th, we had our first meeting with the Tatlock neighborhood regarding lights, just simply because it was on the preliminary budget. It wasn't adopted budget, but it was on the preliminary budget. And then we had five, four subsequent meetings after that. We have hundreds of questions, hundreds of concerns, that we will be addressing. But clearly, the safety, parking needed to be addressed first. And I want to thank the chief of police for doing such a great job, as well as working with Parking Services on making that situation a little bit better. Unfortunately, we don't have more land to build more parking spaces, right? Maybe there's a way that we can expand the Tatlock parking lot in some way, but other than that, we've addressed the major concerns. And those concerns needed to be addressed, whether lights were installed or not. Councilwoman Hamlet, to your question, and I know you might need a more in-depth answer, but the lights will be utilized at night. Sorry. That was, I was trying to be lighthearted. There is a great initiative that was started by a group of moms from the Franklin School. It's called Wait Till 8th. And I think this is a great segue into that program. Because their initiative is to get our kids off screens and stop using social media on their phones. Let's get our kids out playing. We have a lot of residents who like to walk. Wouldn't you like to have a nice space for them, a well-lit space, track for them to walk on? I do. This narrative of the lights being on until 10:00 PM, 365 days of the year, I'm going to tell you exactly where that happened. February 7th, in the cafeteria, myself, the mayor, Mark, and David Guida were there from the Department of Community Programs, along with Michelle and several other neighbors. The question was asked, "Well, could the lights be on until 10:00 PM, 365 days of the year?" Mark Azaroski answered that question. And he answered it, "Well, yeah, I guess they could be. We don't know. We haven't got to that part yet, because we haven't ordered a contract. We haven't determined that we actually have lights yet. We don't have the money until we actually accept it tonight." So, yes, we are going to put an ordinance in place that will have distinct rules around these lights and how they can be used, how long they can be used. And it certainly won't be until 10:00 PM, 365 days a year. So I really wish that the United for Tatlock Facebook group would stop pushing that narrative. And I've seen some of those screenshots. By the way, I'm still waiting for my acceptance into that group. It's been over a year and a half since I requested it. To create more transparency, I was very transparent in having those five meetings, but yet I wasn't able to join your, which, it was your group that you started. But I've seen the screenshots. I've seen what you call, "Let's have more civility." I've seen my names mentioned several times. Fortunately, I'm not in there, but I do have friends that are. Sorry, I'm very passionate about this. I think that's all I had, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Palowski.
Can we let Director Schager go home?
No, we're still in our business agenda. Councilman Palowski.
I just have a quick add-on to a comment that Councilman Smallwood made. Just in case anybody is worried, one of the concerns that came up were people using the field who were not our youth sports. And one of the concerns with that was, if you leave the lights on for the track, people are going to come and just use the field. So, Councilman Smallwood made sure that, as we contemplated these plans, that these towers will have separate lights that are much lower, that will not light the field, but will only light the track. So that on nights when we don't need to light the field for a practice or for a game, people will still be able to use the track, and it will be dark on the field.
Other comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Well, not the first hour of the meeting, but I just would like to say a couple of things. One, and much of it, I'm just echoing, but I still think it's important that I say it. The first thing I would say is, it would be really hard for the city of Summit to say no to a generous donation from pretty much anyone. I feel as though, you know, if a donation is offered, and particularly offered to support something that the residents are clearly motivated to support and are endeavoring to have happen, I think it would be irresponsible of elected officials to not accept a donation. And to that point about residents being motivated, it is really impressive, the timeframe under what- the timeframe under which, um, these residents got together and had a petition signed and also raised this much money. Tammy and I joke all the time about the money tree and, and if, we still haven't found it, but this is, this is about as close as you can get to a money tree, um, for something that really is an initiative that, you know, seemingly is supported by so many in this town. And, um, I really do think that this is, this is for the good of the community. It's really something that is a need, um, and it's been a need, it's been requested by our professionals, um, it's been requested by the Department of Community Programs for, for almost a decade. And lastly, I just want to go back to, um, the, sort of the, addressing the concerns about safety, um, and traffic. And to Kevin's point, to Councilman Smallwood's point about these, these issues have existed for decades. This is not new to the neighborhood that there are problems with parking and traffic on, on days where there are events. Um, it's not going to go away. I actually think that the conversation around lights has highlighted this and has drawn the proper attention to it. And now it's being addressed for the first time ever, and I think that should be noted. Um, and then lastly on that, I'll just say, um, the safety issues have been addressed, but they're not going to stop being addressed. This isn't a final answer. Chief Peters and I talk about a lot of things all the time, over and over again, but, um, in particular, safety, um, and traffic flow and parking and making sure that we get it right. And, and I'm committed to that, so I just, that's all I have.
So great comments, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I would just echo that, you know, I think part of this process, we created this Tatlock Neighborhood Committee to address a lot of the issues that they had there because so much of the interaction with the neighbors, um, it was clear that they had concerns about lights, but all the complaints, they had, they had complaints when there are no lights there around traffic and safety and, you know, out-of-control parking and all that kind of stuff. Including, you know, other concerns specifically associated with the lights. And that committee was created to start to tackle that. And, and I want to thank Michelle, um, and Bob, who worked on that committee because they, they did things. They actually did make stuff happen. That's awesome. Those complaints were going on for years and years and years, and nobody did a single thing about it. Nobody. And so, I get it, you know, there was concern about these lights, um, but this is a great ancillary benefit that that happened. And, and we should congratulate, you know, Michelle and Bob and, and the hard work of that committee for actually making stuff change. And, uh, the chief has worked hard with them, the Board of Ed's gotten involved on this. Parking, um, that's a great accomplishment we should be proud of. It's not sweeping under the rug and say, wow, there's other stuff. I get it, there is always other stuff. This is the first time people have addressed that thing literally in, in, since I've been in Summit, going to football games. That's a good thing. So I'm super happy that that happened, and thank you for, uh, bringing that up, Madam Mayor. So good things can come out of these things. They really can. And that's what good government can be about and, and working together, which is awesome. All right. Any, any other comments on this particular resolution? Okie dokie, uh, all in favor?
Uh, excuse me. Uh, Council President, I would actually like to call for roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Uh, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Kalmeson?
Nay.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
Council President McTernan.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're on to our last one. Thank you public for staying. Uh, this is, for those following at home, this is, uh, Consent Agenda Finance Resolution Number 11 that got pulled. And, uh, Councilwoman Toth, would you like to introduce this, please?
Okay, thank you, Council President. Uh, Resolution 12140. City of Summit Grants Property Tax Exemption to Disabled Vet, Vet, Veterans. And this resolution authorizes prograta refund for property taxes paid to two of them. I move, I move to adopt this resolution.
Go here second.
Second.
All right, comments from the public? No, we're not there yet, we got one more to go. I know, comments. This is Resolution Number 11 on the Consent Agenda, uh, Finance Number 11. It's 12140. Uh, do I, all right, hearing known, uh, do I have any comments from the council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'll be a minute. Um, the reason why I brought this one up for public comment is because I, I drive the city tax assessor crazy, um, when asked, I'm a veteran, and so I take this very seriously when I see a veteran, especially a disabled veteran with property taxes. And sometimes I find some really interesting stories, you know, and, and we're not here to, you know, that's really, it's a tax assessor thing. We're not here to say whether or not they, you know, can get their taxes, you know, they obviously deserve to get exemptions from their taxes. What I will say is in a city like Summit, um, we've had a ton recently, and I think that it would be helpful to advocate to the state for some of these, uh, funds to come back to the municipality. From the state, you know, I don't know if we'll ever get there, but I think it is important as they add up. Um, the, the cost burden does go to the other taxpayers, so fully supportive of the disabled veterans, um, property tax exemptions and obviously thank them for their service, but I, I would like to push, uh, the state to reimburse us for some of these, uh, funds. And I think there's some legislation on the table. I reached out to a senator today, um, just to see if, if we could advocate for that. So just, that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, all right, that is, uh, that's it for official business. I guess it's what everyone's been waiting for. We're now moving on to our public comment section of our meeting. I would just remind people of what our esteemed clerk said at the beginning. If you're going to have a comment, come up, I'll give your name and just, and please keep your comments, uh, to three minutes or less to facilitate everyone getting a chance to speak. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mindy McInnis. I live at 46 Glen Side. Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Hamlet bringing up conversations about projects that seem to disappear. I'd like to bring up mine, which is the Glen Side Avenue Drainage Project. I have a letter from a year ago. Kevin Smallwood came to my house. I really appreciate it. So did, uh, Vartan when he was, um, on the council. Just so you know, I've spent $25,000 in water mitigation from water that comes off of the street and into my driveway and goes into my neighbor's yards. I feel like I am supplementing the cities in action. I feel like this is a special tax that only Glen Side residents and also Hughes Street have to pay. People behind me have spent four times as much for water mitigation. This was going to be solved with the sidewalk project, also with water project in a combo. We were very excited when we received these letters a year ago. We also received a letter about Bolsterall Place traffic, which was also very important to us. People have run into a house, I think they're drunk, numerous times. This is a really bad street. Recently, the gas company was working on that street and they had some dirt on the ground and they started to spray it off and it started going right into my driveway. And the guy's like, wait, there's not a drainage on this street? And I said, no, it's actually down the street and to the left and over another block. He's like, how can that be? I'm like, you know, that's a really good question. And then the water and the mud came down to my driveway and they cleaned it up. And they were like, I'm so sorry that's happened. I said, that's more than what Summit has ever said to me. So long story short, I'm curious what happened to the project. I'm tired of spending money on water mitigation that's coming off of the street. I understand it's a county road and I understand there was a plan at one point, and I've not heard anything since. I want to thank you for your time. I thank you for coming to my house and walking that distance. Thank you to Vartan, who also did it. I encourage all of you to come. I'll give you a cup of coffee. Just want to thank you for your time. When I look at the Summit beacon ahead of me, I think, you know, wow, that's the water coming down Glen Side into my garage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Rosalyn Kendellin, 36 Lorab Avenue. Council President McTernan, Mayor Fagan, and Council Liaison to the Summit Housing Board, Summit Housing Authority Board, Boyer. I am the Commissioner on the Summit Housing Authority Board, and I serve as the Chair of the Board this year. Summit Provide, Summit Housing Authority provides housing for 70 families and 120 seniors. I did not attend the council meeting on September 3rd, but I did watch the video recording of the meeting. And this evening, I would like to address the main thrust of Councilman Boyer's remarks that he made at the council meeting on September 3rd concerning the Summit Housing Authority. He said that some of the tenants had complaints about the condition of Summit Housing Authority units, such as leaky faucets, and about the administrative procedures, such as rent collections or workmen arriving unannounced. In addition, Councilwoman Delia also said that she receives three calls a month from tenants who have complaints about the S H A. And of course, tenants have the right to speak at council meetings and to speak to council members or to any of the seven Summit Housing Authority Commissioners about their concerns. However, neither council members nor even the S H A Commissioners can resolve these issues. The place for tenants' issues to be resolved is with the S H A's office staff, staffed by the Executive Director Jacqueline Gray and her employees, who follow HUD regulations. Therefore, tenants who make complaints to council members or Commissioners need to be directed to Ms. Gray and her staff. This is where the action can be taken. The rent calculation can be revised, arrangements can be made for that leaky faucet to be repaired, or workmen can be rescheduled. Councilman Boyer also said that tenants are intimidated and harassed by S H A staff about lease and rent issues. Each tenant signs a lease for his or her unit, which contains the rights and responsibilities of the tenant and the S H A. For example, if a tenant fails to pay rent or violates another term of the lease, he or she is held accountable and can be served a notice to cease or a complaint for non-payment of rent. And this is not staff intimidation or harassment. This is the staff requiring the tenant to comply with the lease, which is critically important for the well-being of the S, all S H A tenants and for the protection of S H A property and for the financial soundness of S H A. I have confidence in Ms. Gray and her staff to treat the tenants respectfully and fairly in this regard. Of course, tenants who are dissatisfied have options. First, a tenant is welcome to speak at the monthly S H A board meetings during the public comment meeting, and those issues are followed up by the staff. In addition, the S H A has monthly res-
Wrap it up, please.
Okay, okay, two more seconds. Resident committee meetings for tenants to discuss issues, and again, these are provided to the staff. Finally, HUD regulations require leases to contain a grievance procedure, and the tenants can find a just, effective, efficient settlement for grievances against the S H A. And notwithstanding this process, I think council Commissioners and myself are willing to speak to, um, tenants, and we have done that in the past, and I do, do plan to do that in the future. And to conclude, uh, the board is responsible for overseeing all of the operations of the S H A, and we, um, want, want, um, to know that if you have any concerns, that please talk to the Commissioners. And also, it's important for us to work together, to have a cooperative relationship, to better serve the S H A. Tried to wrap it up fast.
No, and I, I appreciate your important message to the residents of the, uh, in the Summit Housing Authority. So thank you for your comments.
Yes, sure. Thank you.
Ms. Kendellin, can you just leave your statement?
Uh, I'll tell you, I made so many corrections to my notes, I can give it to you later when it's corrected. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Adriana Alarcon, Springfield Avenue. Sulprak exclamation point, question mark. Broken county pipe exclamation mark, uh, mark, question mark. Army Corps of Engineers exclamation point, question mark. I passed, uh, 712 Springfield Ave contact, which seemed like a viable option to get equipment down to Sulprak. If 710 property is the contact needed, I cannot provide any contact info since it's affordable housing units. Previously discussed, September was the planned start of the project. We can't afford another long lull in the momentum we finally gained on this issue. Thank you for your time. I'll email my statement.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Council President McTernan, uh, members of council and staff. I'm Jim Bennett, B E N N E T T, 38 Fairview Avenue. President McTernan's comments about the importance of the school budget prompted some thoughts of mine about, uh, making the city and the school district work better together. And I'd like to suggest, uh, these ideas to the liaisons to the Board of Education. Uh, the first idea came to me from a member of council who believes that the city maintains too many capital assets for the school district. The leading example is the Anderson Field House. The school district uses it, but the city owns and maintains it. It would be healthier to have the school district, the entity that uses the asset, own and maintain it. The larger point is that there should be a review of all the assets that the city owns, maintains, or funds for the school district to consider transfer to the school district. Summit residents would be better served if these assets came under the school district's ownership and responsibility, but there's a condition. If the city transfers assets to the school district, the school district must have a more transparent budgeting process. There, the city's budget process can serve as a model. The city and the school district appear to have different fiscal years, but both entities finalize their budgets at about the same time. One thought would be to have a combined capital budget workshop. Uh, the city has a capital budget workshop on December of each year. Another idea would be to include the school budget snapshot with the city budget snapshot mailer that goes out each year before the city's May budget hearing. Now just imagine, a school budget mailer would draw in residents who do not normally attend Board of Education meetings. Finally, I was impressed with the response that school district business manager Derek Jess gave me when I attended a school board meeting last Thursday regarding its management of tangible, real, and personal property, including capital assets. The school district appears to have learned the lessons since the near collapse of the Wilson Gym. I would like to commend Mr. Jess to the city as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Jacqueline Lasaracina, L A S A R A C I N A. I'm a resident of Summit. Good evening, I would also like to talk about the school budget. Bottom line upfront, I ask that we please budget better for our children and our teachers. I just came from back to school night, well, now it's, it's been several hours. I was at back to school night earlier. Uh, our teachers are doing amazing things, and yet our median Summit teacher makes $10,000 less than the state median. $10,000 less. Our teachers deserve better. We have classrooms here in Summit with requests for basic classroom supplies on Donors Choose, a nonprofit website that connects charitable donors to, quote, "teachers in need." Glue sticks, Play-Doh, lab equipment for the high school. Why in Summit do we have classrooms asking for donations of basic school supplies? I believe our children deserve better. Now, at the same time, I just learned this evening that every kindergartner has their own Chromebook, their own computer, rather than there being one set that could be shared across the different classes. So every kindergartner has their own Chromebook, but we're underpaying our teachers and we're not covering the cost of basic classroom supplies. I can't make this make sense. We're not funding the right things in our schools. The bottom line is not the only thing that matters in a budget. We need to fund the right things. We need priorities-based budgeting, a budget that supports the strategic priorities of our school district. Anything else is guesswork, and we're seeing the disappointing results. Last spring, we heard from the Operations Committee of the Board of Ed about using zero-based budgeting for our schools. Let's be very clear, that is an austerity measure for our Summit schools. I find that unacceptable. We need to protect our schools, we need to protect the excellence of our public education program. We need to protect the excellence of our public education program. As a friendly reminder, the Board of Ed is appointed by the mayor. They are not directly accountable to the community. This body is directly accountable to the community, and three of the five members of the Budgeting School Group are here at the dais. So rather than trying to send us down the road to the Board of Ed, I respectfully ask that you please commit to doing better for our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Scalzo, S C A L Z O. My contact information's at scalzofoto.com. I wasn't actually planning on speaking today, but I had a quick, strange interaction with Dan Crisafelli earlier. And the only reason I'm talking about him is because I understand he's a candidate for the council. That's the only reason I'm bringing him up. So I walk in, and I go to sit down, and the chief welcomed me in, and I sit next to him, and then Dan takes out a camera and takes a picture of me, which is fine, we're all on camera. But what he's trying to do, he's trying to set up the scenario that people are harassing him and intimidating him. And the chief saw that I literally sat down at a random chair. I was not trying to intimidate Dan Crisafelli, just for the record, I don't want to put that on the record, because he's filing false police reports allegedly and making these accusations against the gentleman that's going to speak next. So I just want to put that on the record. And, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I will be remaining anonymous. Council President, Mayor, City Clerk, can largely be a thankless job, and I thank you all for the jobs that you're doing. I would like to speak a little bit about the history of, you know, my coming into Summit. I've been here for about eight months. And when I first got here, I was challenging a lot of the Republican leadership team because you guys are the council majority. It was met with professionalism, and I called everybody out, particularly at one point or another, except for Councilwoman Michelle, I almost said your last name wrong, and also Councilwoman Toth, never called you guys out particularly. And then I started focusing on the Democrats. I'm an advocate for government transparency and accountability. So as I started, there were some residents, and they were feeding me all this information, "Look at this, look at that, look at this, I can't wait to meet you, your videos are great, I'm so glad you're in town," all this stuff. Second, I started looking at the Democrats. These same people now start, and after what happened with Mr. Crisafelli, with him saying that I threatened, harassed him, followed him out to his car. I found out about this article because he privately messaged and sent it to me with a message that said, "Hi, Mikey, let us know how we can help." And I'm reading this article, and I'm just like, "What the hell is this shit?" Like, it was just, yeah, I didn't even mean to. Like, bizarre, bizarre, you know? So I thought that was really interesting. All I did was ask him questions. The man didn't know it was on camera. He tried to advance his own political opportunity and gain at not only my expense, but all the residents', all of the residents' expense is what he tried to do. So I think that's shameful. That's absolutely disgusting. And he said I was a supporter or a follower of Kevin Smallwood. I had never publicly or even privately said I support Kevin Smallwood, but now I do. Now I do. Yeah, you better believe it, you know? I think that's, people who are inferior cower in the shadow of real leadership. And the reason why I was challenging the leadership team is because they have leadership, you know? And I will hold anyone accountable. That's what I do. That's what keeps me well. I don't care if you're Democrat, I don't care if you're Republican, you know? It's important for me. And in the spirit of Charlie Kirk, I want to say-- Everybody's got to say what they're needing to say, just as soon as they're needing to say it, the freedom to speak, to be a freak, or the freedom to say that you hate it and have a big, oh, conversation. I saw laughing, and I saw glee. It could have been you, it could have been me. I would like to have an opportunity, if you allow me, to, in the spirit of our American values over party politics and identity, give everybody an opportunity to accept an American flag. If I could start with Mr. Giacobe, who I've had a history with, as a way to, as a symbolic way to think of our values, our core values over party politics, if I could start there and then go to the left and give everybody an opportunity to take a flag?
That'd be fine, and then we'll move on, okay? Thank you so much for your comments.
Mikey, I hope they don't hear me.
Put this on my Jeep.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice surprise.
Please begin.
Before my time starts, can I get more time?
No, three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yep.
All right, we've heard you guys for the past, I don't know, four hours?
I know, three minutes.
I know, I know. So, all right, so, good evening, I'm Garden City Accountability. You can find me on YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram. I'm here tonight to support Boncholio and ask for a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, who was tragically murdered. Whatever your view of him may be, Charlie stood for free speech, and it's something that we should all value. So I'm going to give 30 seconds. Charlie Kirk once said, "Freedom of speech is not about protecting the speech you agree with, it's about protecting the speech you disagree with." So we come to these meetings to be heard. You may not like what we have to say, but every voice deserves respect. Retaliation against people for their speech is wrong. And yet, Chris, Dan Crisafelli filed a false police report against Boncholio. The allegations were not true, and it was on video. Now ask yourselves, is he really scared of a man with a camera and the fact that he's so childish to whip out a phone and record us? That's not leadership, it's weakness. You cannot vote for this man for council in November. He lied on a police report, he doesn't answer questions, and he has no credibility. I ask this council and the people of Summit to stand up for free speech, honesty, and stand up for accountability. And if you guys have a tip about corruption in your community, you can email me at alertgsanow@gmail.com. Yeah, so let's get the speaking time up. I mean, this is crazy. We definitely heard you guys for, I don't know, four hours. I've been here since six o'clock. The meeting was supposed to start at 7:20, it started at eight. There's 40 minutes right there. I mean, the least you guys can do is give the people a little bit more time, because we hear a lot from you. And I've been watching these meetings for the past, I don't know, was it eight months you've been coming here? You know, and some people get cut off, people have speeches. She even read something for someone, some woman on a laptop. That's extra time. That's something, you know, we should give that courtesy to other people, not just some, you know what I mean? So let's get that speaking time to at least, at least five minutes. And you guys can vote on that tonight, or put forth an ordinance to make the speaking time five minutes, at least, for the courtesy of the people here in Summit that don't want to be cut off. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Dave Hoffman. I live at One New England Avenue. I wanted to be delivering a very non-political message, but unfortunately, I have to respond to what I've heard. My mom was a Holocaust survivor, and she said before she died, "Never think it couldn't happen here." And I'm afraid I'm beginning to see it is happening here, where my patriotism is being questioned. I resent that. Anyway, now for my non-political message. The other weekend, I was walking around saying, "What is there to do in Summit? Something fun, something different, something artistic, something cultural." And once again, I'm going to raise the idea of using the firehouse, the old firehouse, for a place that could be enjoyed by the community for cultural events. I would love to see a Summit Performing Arts Center in some form at that location. I know that you're thinking about housing, but as part of that housing, there could be a cultural arts center. Madison has it as part of their housing, and it's used 365 days. It's amazing for recitals, dance. The Summit Film Society shows her films in Madison, because there's no place in Summit. Isn't that a shame? Anyway, I'm going to be working on this idea and hopefully speaking with you about creating a Summit Performance Arts Center. You know, I'm a school teacher, and I'm not nervous in front of classes, but boy, am I nervous in front of you people. Wow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is David Snow with the Exposure Report, and I'm here in solidarity with my fellow Freedom Enforcer and Turned Response Team member. I want to thank the chief for, you have people coming up to him trying to upset about us exercising our First Amendment rights, and I seen him telling them they have the right to speak and say what they want to say, especially during Constitution Week, I think it's very important. So thank you to the chief. Recently, as an independent journalist, Boncholio here asked questions in this here very public building. That's not harassment. That's democracy. That's the job of a free press. However, Dan Crisafelli couldn't handle it. He didn't just leave the room, he left reality. He went to the police and filed a false police report. He claimed the journalist harassed him and followed him to his car, except the facts don't match his fantasy. The journalist never left the building after him. This wasn't a misunderstanding, this was a fabrication, and a fabrication tells us more about Dan than the truth ever could. Because here's the psychology, when he feels pressure, he doesn't stand up to it, he rewrites it. When he feels cornered, he doesn't answer, he invents. When accountability knocks, he doesn't open the door, he calls the cops and plays the victim. That's not leadership, that's pathology. And when that lie started to look too thin to stand on, he added another, he added another. He branded the journalist as political, trying to tie him to his opponent's party. That's projection, that's paranoia, that's the authoritarian instinct to turn every critic into an enemy of the state. Let's psychoanalyze this for what it is. We're not just looking at one false report, we're looking at fragility, a man who collapses under scrutiny. We're looking at manipulation, a man who weaponizes the police to cover his fear. We're looking at narcissism, a man who must always be the victim. And we're looking at dishonesty, a man who rewrites reality anytime the truth doesn't fit his ego. Now ask yourself, if he'll lie about being followed to his car, what else will he lie about? If he'll weaponize law enforcement to silence a journalist, will he weaponize the city hall to silence residents? If he sees accountability as harassment, how will he treat democracy when it demands transparency? Summit doesn't need actors playing the part of public servant. You don't need fabricators, you don't need men so fragile that a question feels like an attack. We need leaders who can stand in the light, light, let there be light, without flinching, leaders who can take questions without calling them crimes, leaders who can answer the people without rewriting the script. Dan Crisafelli has shown us who he is, and when someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. He's not strong, he's not honest, he's not fit for office. So let me close with this, a man who can't handle questions has no business handling power. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leroy Truth of Leroy Truth Investigations. Please subscribe to me on YouTube and Facebook. You can investigate me now, too. I'm laughing because, as this gentleman was speaking, the coward of Summit, Dan Suckafashi--
Yep. Please address the council.
I'm going to address anything I want. This is First Amendment, remember? You had a beautiful speech about it. I'm going to look here, I'm going to look here, you did a great job. You've got some really wonderful, powerful speakers in Summit. I'm really loving this place. Now, one thing that really concerns me, though, is the three minutes, and that is not enough time. And I know you gave this very nice woman, is she still here? I don't see her. You gave her over four minutes. Now, that would not be content neutral if you stopped me at three, and so I hope you will honor that. Now, as far as the three minutes, I've heard some people said, "Well, it's a process to change that," which it should be six minutes. That's reasonable. So with a show of hands, how many of you right now would be willing to change from three minutes to six minutes? Show of hands. So the people can speak freely?
Oh, nobody.
Not a single Republican or Democrat? You have all gone on and on and on all evening. You love to hear yourself speak, but I came from New England to be here, to support this gentleman here, who, that Dan Suckafashi-- I just can't get his name right, I don't know. But he lied about this man here, and you had something you said, which was disappointing as well, and that is Mike McTernan. And it was Council President Mike McTernan, and this is in the tappington.net, terrible, terrible newspaper here. "While I cannot comment on an ongoing police investigation, I have full confidence that the Summit Police Department"-- I love the chief, too, by the way, he's awesome-- "will conduct a thorough and professional follow-up, i.e. investigation," he said, emphasizing that all residents deserve to feel safe in their community. Well, a man who asks questions should never be investigated criminally. That's a problem. You should not support that. He's got to do what he's told to do in regards to that, and of course, he will find nothing. But I support this man here. You should all support it, because especially you blathered on about the First Amendment, but when a journalist is asking questions, relevant questions, to a candidate running who has a lot of responsibility up here. Now, I get vibes of a lot of professionalism, vibes of some infighting, vibes of caring for the residents from different ones, and vibes of not caring for them. And I'm hoping that you support free journalism, and you will condemn Dan Suckafel-- if I come again, I promise the fact, I promise. But the First Amendment is sacred, and it only kicks in if my speech offends you or his speech offends you. Otherwise, the First Amendment is completely unnecessary. And lastly, Dan, whatever his last name is, he ran out like a coward.
Mr. Truth, I'm going to give you the same courtesy I gave that woman. Just wrap it up, please.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that this gentleman, as he was speaking, Dan, the guy running for council here, he ran away. And each of you seem to have pretty thick skins, and I appreciate that, I think everyone else does as well. And you do listen to us when we speak, whether you act upon it or not, that's a different story. So I appreciate spending some time here today, and God bless you all, we come here peacefully. God bless the chief, I really like him a lot, if you have a major fight with him. So thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Good evening. I'm Diego Hoick, Argyle Court. First of all, one of the things that Jim Bennett just mentioned about scheduling things together, using assets together, perhaps that could be applied to field usage as well. But that's not what I came to talk about. I am a taxpayer. I'm the father to three Summit Public School students. I'm concerned about the impact of the school budget cuts on the education of my children. We came to Summit from an exped assignment overseas. My oldest child spoke Spanish better than English. Excuse me, I'm speaking. His English as a second language teachers helped him advance from an A reading level to an L level in mere months. This council voted not to hire an ESL teacher. Another one of my kids emerged from the COVID lockdowns with difficulty processing his emotions. Thanks to his outstanding counsel and teachers, he now thrives. What a paradox. As everyone running for office parrots concerns about the mental health of our children, you cut a counseling position and the district's mental health clinician. Our middle school students now have to waste time standing in line for Chromebook support because four technology coach positions were eliminated. Finally, how can our school fulfill our mission to, quote, "prepare all students to thrive in an evolving world," end quote, when you chose not to hire a new computer science teacher and cut teacher training and access to information like textbooks and subscriptions? Pennywise, but not foolish. My biggest concern is that these cuts may be merely the tip of an iceberg. My biggest concern is that these cuts may be merely the tip of an iceberg. None of Mayor Fagan's three B.O.V. appointments will have kids in our public schools next year. They can cut next year's budget without affecting their loved ones. Who will speak for our students? I also wonder about the push to gain total oversight over what grants are funded by the S.E.F., a beloved institution that has contributed over $12 million to our schools. I worry about a possible hidden agenda. In this sense, it's noteworthy that this week, Councilwoman Palowski wrote how he truly feels about our schools, and I quote, "For far too long, our teachers have indoctrinated our students with their own ideas and agendas," end quote. I could not disagree with you more on this, Bob. Our teachers are tops. In contrast to this, prior administrations made strategic investments. In the last few years, A.C. was finally installed in our middle school, while the athletic field, drama spaces, and science labs were upgraded. The Together for Summit team was voted into office to solve our affordable housing obligation without overdevelopment. Summit residents did not give you a mandate to radically reform our schools. Our public schools are the crown jewel of Summit. They're the key driver of our property values and, more importantly, the future of our children. So, thank you. And Kevin, I also was not allowed to join a private Facebook group when I was running.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comments?
Hi, Dori Gagnon. I am making my own motion to have Ms. Calmenson recuse herself from anything further for Tatlaw. I find it appalling that she's actually able to vote on the lights or having discussion about the lights when I believe Mr. Palowski has to recuse himself when anything comes to Broad Street West. So I look to you, Mr. Giacobi, as she lives directly across the street, and I believe her husband is probably involved in this lawsuit. I'm not saying he is, but I believe he is because he is the face of the United for Tatlaw group, making comments like, hey, everyone, I'd like you to encourage all of you to put out lawn signs for Dan Crisofelli and Jackie LaSara Sina, who are running against Kevin Adelia. The current council is intent on forcing these lights on us without addressing any of our concerns. Kevin has proven, Kevin has proven time again that he doesn't care about our neighborhood and sees us as an obstacle. And Delia has held meetings with a few of us, but done nothing to go along with whatever her party wants. Electing Dan and Jackie is the best chance we have at having a council majority. Council majority, because that's a great idea. That cares all about Summit. Those are in bold letters. DM me your address if you're interested in lawn signs, and they'll be delivered to you. Miles. P.S. Dan and Jackie have expressed interest in meeting with our neighborhood to discuss the lights, playgrounds, and overdevelopment, or anything else you mind. Stay tuned for details. Hashtag Kevin Doesn't Care. Hashtag Where's Delia? Hashtag She Needs to Recuse Herself. Just like the fact that David Nadeau didn't recuse himself when it came to Broad Street West. I find it fitting that she's sitting over here making decisions when there's a lawsuit out, and she was the one that started this group, and she's on council now. Why does she have any say as to what's going on with the lights and this whole group? Maybe she's not involved. But her husband's really active, and her neighbors are. So I make a motion, I move the motion, I want her removed from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
El Rampador, Hudson County. I'm here to talk about the ableism here in Summit. I'm in a lot of pain right now. I shouldn't be here. I should be home on a Zoom meeting. And for 19 months, you gave us Zoom access. You gave disabled people all the things they were asking for for years, like online church, online school, online, everything, online work. And for 19 months, disabled people were along for the ride. My friend Jeff took part from his deathbed in meetings, from stage four cancer. People in wheelchairs all over the state were taking part in these meetings. And then, all of a sudden, you took it away. And why'd you take it away? Why'd you take away Zoom access for the disabled? For sick and dying people? You have schools in Summit without proper wheelchair access where children are fire hazards because the access is bad, and you've got a kid on the other side of the building where there's no ramp? They're a fire hazard. Children. The children. We forget about the children, we forget about the vets. We take photo ops with vets, but we forget about the vets. You have, all over New Jersey, you have urban enterprise zones where you get tax breaks, but if you're in a wheelchair, you can't access the same tax breaks as able-bodied people. And you see that all over. We have police stations around New Jersey without wheelchair access. Post offices around New Jersey with no wheelchair access. And it's bipartisan. It's a bipartisan issue. I saw Jack Chiderelli a couple of weeks ago in Dover, and I tried to talk to him about wheelchair access to police stations and post offices, and he refused to even engage with it. And it's bipartisan because you talk about the Cannabis Regulatory Commission here in New Jersey, where cannabis patients, this industry was built, this cannabis industry was built on sick, dying, and disabled patients. You would think the C.R.C. would have a resolution or an ordinance to have wheelchair access to dispensaries. But there are dispensaries all over New Jersey without wheelchair access. South Orange, Jersey City, Maplewood, Camden. They take the photo ops with disabled vets, but they don't care. And I've seen it all over, and it's bipartisan. It's not just Republicans, it's not just Democrats. It's our government. And you have failed it to disabled again. We're asking for Zoom access, can we have Zoom access back? It wouldn't take too much, but I hear the excuses now. Oh, we don't have the technology. You had the technology for 19 months for Zoom access. Or we don't have the people to do it. You had the people to do it for 19 months. All the excuses I've heard. We recently got Dover to go back to in-person, to Zoom meetings. Except that they banned the in-person meetings. They can't have meetings in-person, but it's crazy what's going on in Dover. So I would ask that you put the last first. You think about disabled vets because you wouldn't even have this council if it wasn't for disabled vets fighting for your right to be ignorant and ableist. And if you're ignorant and ableist, that's on you. I'm not saying you are, but maybe you need to look at yourselves and find out why your schools don't have proper access. A lot of issues.
Mr. Rampador, could you wrap it up, please?
Thank you. And that's all I have. "They shall grow not old as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kevin McGaughy wouldn't want to have me again. The, alright, so the one thing that bothered me throughout Broad Street West when I first got involved and tried to help those people was they tended to misrepresent the truth, give information that was half-truths, and it really was the purpose of dividing people so that, you know, you couldn't really see what they were doing or whatever. And Broad Street West, I realized, was just, it was a product of this problem of people acting in very dishonest ways. And then, you know, in doing so, they would get everybody pitted against each other. So that hasn't stopped at all. That continues. The three candidates for Democratic council put out a statement titled, "Council incompetence puts Summit at risk of overdevelopment." There's a lot of stuff about affordable housing that you addressed that refused it. But then they had this one, they had this one section at the bottom. "Day one, we will protect Summit from overdevelopment and commit the following changes in the way council serves the public. One, share the information as soon as we are able. That's why we're alerting the community to these lawsuits now. No hiding the truth or backroom deals. Two, engage with residents throughout the process to gather feedback, understand the sentiment, and make the decision that best represents all of Summit residents." It was signed by Dan Crisofelli, Jacqueline LaSara Sina, and Chatelle Landman, and liked by Claire Toth. Claire, you like this post, so you're aware of it. And then this kind of dovetails into questions that I had asked you, Michelle, via email, because you don't want to discuss anything on social media, that's fine, but you've never answered. And they were, was the council legally able to publicly discuss the developer proposals with the public before they did with respect to the Affordable Housing Plan that was done? Because you have given this impression on Facebook, and now they're doing it as well, saying that, like, the council hid something in backdoor deals. I was under the impression that council, and this is what I've asked you, could you have discussed it with the public beforehand? Claire, could you have discussed anything about that beforehand? And I said, what did you, as a council member, assume you knew about the project before it went public to make the process better, and why didn't you tell the residents about it as soon as you knew? If you were allowed. Have you explained the process and constraints put on council and the planning board to the residents in the area? Did you explain the critical nature of council approving the plan and the ramifications that they had not? Are you telling us that you would have, you have had the plan rejected by council and the city, and having the city lose its immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits? Can I get four minutes?
Just start wrapping it up, please.
Alright, can you please explain to all of this, whatever? Claire, you've talked about fiscal responsibility, prudent, the city's responsibility. Everybody's worried about the schools and everything else. And you and Jacqueline LaSara Sina have publicly voiced your support for the at-home and summit proposal. Again, I've asked you all these questions, I've asked all of you, or I asked people who supported, I asked you if you could answer these, and you have not responded. When council, at the time that they moved the firehouse, when they approved that budget of, I think it was $15.8 million at the time, I think it grew a little bit since then, David Nadeau and Greg Vartan stated that the only reason why they felt comfortable with such a large number was because the sale proceeds and tax revenues or payments in Lewis taxes would help pay for that. Okay, so I've asked you, have you done a cost analysis of what the at-home and summit project was? What's the value difference of what they would pay versus what we get property that a developer would pay? Could you please break down the costs associated with the services to the residents? Most significantly would be the cost of education. Have you, I know I asked Dennis White this, and Dennis White told me it wasn't his problem.
Mr. McGaughy, giving you tons of time.
So I'm just wondering, have you looked at the costs associated with that? And could you explain them? And I guess Jackie could do the same, since she also supports it.
Thank you. Alright, other public comments? Okay. Alright, I'm going to close the public comment section of the meeting, and we're now on to council member comments and new business. Anyone on council like to speak? Councilman Smallway. You already lose the over bet.
I, I, I know this is extremely late, and I, I'm not going to apologize for this because this is extremely important and kind of goes off of your comments. Mr. Rampador?
I'm Rampador.
Rampador.
So I have to share some unfortunate news. There was a tragic event that affected the biggest, one of the biggest stars of our Summit volleyball community. A few, a few weeks ago, Jonathan Liang was in California enjoying his summer break before going to study, before going to study engineering at Lehigh University as a freshman. He decided to take a surf lesson at Laguna Beach. He had a great time in being the athlete that he is. Got up on the board, surfed the beach. After his lesson, he felt tired and had some lower back pain that progressed into severe pain and spasms. Jonathan has been diagnosed with surfer's myelop, myelopathy?
Myelopathy.
Myelopathy, thank you, doctor. Which is an extremely rare condition that affects first-time and novice surfers. There are less than 80 documented cases worldwide, and I am sad to report that Jonathan cannot walk at this point. Has no feeling below his waist and is bound to a wheelchair as a result of it. Jonathan was flown back to New Jersey last week and is currently undergoing some occupational therapy at Kessler Rehabilitation in West Orange. I received news today that fortunately, he will, assuming everything goes well, will be returning home tomorrow here in Summit. This is extremely heartbreaking, and his family is in dire straits of help. And there is a webpage called Help, and I will put this on my council page as well and as anywhere else I can on the social media. It is helphoplive.org/campaign/26256 if you'd like to donate. But not only are they in need of some funds, because not all of their medical expenses are covered by insurance, but also looking for possible some pro bono or discounted rates on home construction to help outfit their home so that it makes it a lot more convenient for Jonathan, as well as legal services and also medical accounting. So if there's anything that you can do, it would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Good message. Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski.
So I have a bunch.
Go back to Italy.
Yeah.
First, the at-home affordable, 100% affordable project was discussed at the debate, and there were some omissions that I wanted to point out. So there's, there's three important aspects of the at-home 100% affordable project at the old firehouse site that people should be aware of and why I think the majority of this council would not support it. The first is it would deplete our Affordable Housing Trust. We have about $2 million in that trust. And as a part of that project to make it work, we would have to donate every penny. Now, that money is used to help facilitate affordable housing in Summit. There's no, there's never been a requirement that a municipality pay for affordable housing or donate land or anything like that. We have to facilitate it by relaxing zoning. So a builder picks out a piece of property where they would like to make a building, but it's not zoned for what they want to do, so they come to the city and they say, hey, we'd like to be a part of your Affordable Housing Plan. Please, please help us with some zoning, and in exchange, we'll give you X number of units, whatever that may be. And so the at-home project would not only require us to deplete our Affordable Housing Trust, which we use for things like helping our house create special needs affordable housing, which I understand is one of the most lacking affordable housing that we have in New Jersey. We, we use it for things like assisting the United Methodist Church in creating 15 affordable units for our seniors. And we wouldn't be able to do any of that when those opportunities come about. The second is that it would require the city to donate the firehouse property. Now, I don't know what it's going to sell for. I've seen estimates, it's millions of dollars. And that's essentially Summit taxpayers donating millions of dollars, which, of course, we're not required to do under the Affordable Housing laws. And which, you know, based on the whole reason that we moved the firehouse, we need that money to replenish money that we have, money that we have spent on that, which are taxpayer dollars. So we should be trying to get as much as we can for that. The third prong that people should be aware of is that the city would be on the hook for any overages. And the plan that I saw was not fully baked. And, and we would, the city would likely have to pay more taxpayer dollars in order to make that project come to fruition. And as Councilwoman Hamlet just reminded me, it would generate little or no tax revenue for the city, unlike what a builder might put there. So that's at home. Second, my friend Diego mentioned that the Together for Summit team was elected to help solve the affordable housing problems without overdevelopment. Now, if anybody remembers- Now, if anybody remembers, when we were going through the whole Broad Street West saga, we were told repeatedly by the folks on council, I remember Marjorie Fox saying that we can't satisfy our round three obligations unless we do this Broad Street West project, which would have had unprecedented density, I think it was fifty units per acre. Eighty-eight units per acre? Okay, eighty-eight units per acre. Yeah, that's, at home is fifty. Broad Street West was eighty-eight units per acre. And, you know, we got elected and we rolled up our sleeves, and not only did we successfully get out of round three without having to build Broad Street West, we actually have a surplus of units. And it just took a little hard work, but it obviously could be done, and I'm really proud of what we did to accomplish that. Next, public comment time. I'd be willing to up it to four and a half minutes, with a warning at four and a hard stop.
There's just thirty seconds more, please.
Please. With, with a hard stop at the end of that, that thirty seconds. And I also spoke to the city solicitor earlier about, you know, depending on how packed the houses, if we can extend that time on certain nights, here we are, it's after midnight, it's already tomorrow, but, you know, on a lighter night, if we want to give somebody a little more time, as long as we give everybody that additional time, we could do that within our discretion. So, I would support that. Mike, I'm hoping that you'll explain how the school budget works, and that this council didn't cut anything when it, when it gets to you. My friend Diego also mentioned that I accused our summit teachers of indoctrinating our students. Now, I know he read every one of the seventy-something comments on the Summit Democrat, the SMDC page today, and every one of the, I don't know, sixty-something comments on my Charlie Kirk post. And former Councilman Miniger asked me to clarify whether I was talking about Summit's teachers in my post, and I said, no, I wasn't, and perhaps a better word that I could have used instead of teacher was professors. But if you read my post, within its scope, I thought it was pretty clear what I was talking about. So, the dog park, overwhelming success. People love the dog park, but I was also troubled by something I heard at the debate. One of the candidates said that a dog park would be frivolous, and I couldn't disagree more. I, I, I've been trying to go to the dog park as much as possible, I get there maybe three times a week, and I go up to everybody, I introduce myself, I ask them what they think of the dog park. They all love it, and one of the things that they keep telling me is, I'm meeting all kinds of new friends. You know, could the city set up an app so that I know when my dogs, favorite dogs are going to be there? So we are going to try to make the dog park permanent. As for whether it's frivolous to spend taxpayer dollars on it, one of, one of, well, we didn't spend any money on the temporary dog park, but if we wanted to make it permanent, that would cost money. The dog park down at the dump, which I always question the wisdom of, because the dump's not open on Sunday, every other Saturday, you can't use the dog park there because the free market is there, and when the free market's open, the dog park's closed, and it closes at three forty-five every day. So when do most people want to go to the dog park? After work, on Sunday, on Saturday? It just didn't make a lot of sense, but that dog park costs fifty thousand dollars. So with, you know, government-approved contractors and government-approved vendors, it can add up. But the good news is that a bunch of residents are going to, have told me that they want to start a GoFundMe page, so that they can help defray the cost if not pay for the whole thing. I do believe GoFundMe allows you to donate anonymously, so hopefully that won't be a problem. And then finally, on the First Amendment, I just want to remind everybody, the First Amendment comes first because it's the most important one. Open debate is the foundation of our free society, and we should not chill speech, we should silence no one. And to do so, and I know some people in town who are really, working really hard to influence the electorate, block people. The SMDC blocks people. And if you don't believe me, go on their page, and there's a letter from them explaining that they block people. So, and look, to me, blocking anybody on social media, especially when you're trying to influence the opinions of other people, it does a profound disservice to all of us. So I would ask that, if you're going to participate, you know, if you're going to come to the playground, don't block anybody. You know, let, let everybody see what you have to say and let them respond. That's it.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Council President.
Councilman Boyer.
Well, first, I, I want to apologize to all the residents and the council, because now I know how it feels with me taking so long to speak. Councilman Palowski just killed me. First, you know, I, I speak my mind, and I couldn't help but, you know, see Dan back there, and very uncomfortable. And I think, I think I can say this out of everybody up here. You know, I've been called incompetent, a clown, the devil. You should have seen what the LA Times wrote about me, it was terrible. I've had a whole entire church show up here. The Camping Ban Ordinance, that's where I met a couple of these guys, there was about a hundred people here. The Resident Protection Ordinance, there was, you know, fifty, sixty people here. I mean, all, all yell at me. You know, I, I feel bad for Dan, because, you know, I get it, it's tough, it, you know, it sucks, right? But it comes with the job. You know? I'm like almost feeling emotional here, right? Because, you know, I went through it. It is tough walking in here with a hundred people ready to like rip your head off verbally, maybe, I don't know, you know? But it's a tough thing, you know? It's tough sitting up here.
You didn't run, you didn't run.
Of cour, of course not, I'm built differently. But, but, and the reason why though, you know, it's not normal, I can look at the police chief over there, it's like, you know, hey, man, I've, I've, you know, I was a detective, right? I'm used to like those environments. Not, not everybody's used to that, so I feel bad for him, man. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll say that. So, the next thing is, I saw on Facebook, someone said, this current Republican majority hasn't handled affordable housing as well as ten years ago with the, with the majority Republican council. Murphy as a governor, and all the policies that they passed. From twenty eighteen up into twenty twenty-five, there was about thirteen different executive orders and policies passed. These policies enacted under that Democratic control have collectively mandated three hundred thousand affordable units statewide. And the only reason why I'm bringing this up is because during this campaign, all I hear is that, you know, the Democrats say, you know, the Republicans are for overdevelopment, we're for underdevelopment. I'm like, man, what the, that is so hypocritical, man. You guys passed all these laws, and that's why we're here. So, you know, I just hope people see their hypocrisy in that. The, the, the last thing that I will say is, Charlie Kirk's death was absolutely, you know, horrible. You know, as a father and as a husband, and my heart went out for that, for that man's wife and children. You know, those, those kids will never be able to talk to their father, and she will never be able to spend the rest of her life with a man that she was devoted to raising children with and growing old with. So, all for what? For words. I, I read this John Stuart Mill, eighteen fifty-nine, I thought this was perfect. So I'm going to read this, and I'll be quiet. The particular evil of silencing the expression of an opinion is that it is robbing the human race. Those who dissent from the opinion, still more than those who hold it. If the opinion is right, they are deprived of the opportunity of exchanging error for truth. If wrong, they lose. What is almost as great a benefit, the clearer perception and livelier impression of truth produced by its collision with error. Thank you, Council President.
Can I ask you a question?
Thank you. No, it's.
There are no comments allowed on YouTube when people are on there.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for everybody who stayed. I haven't seen this many residents the next day of a meeting in a long time. Couple of things I wanted to clear up from some of the comments tonight. Glenside is certainly still a priority. I know we're continuing to seek more grant funding. I have to get an update from Congressman Kane's office as far as the grant that we originally went for. I think all of us are, would be supportive of that project continuing, it's certainly, nobody took that off the table. The second one that the woman mentioned was, was it Baltressaw? Oh, sorry. Yes, Baltressaw, that's on the list, that's on our priority, but I'll certainly huddle up with the city administrator and the director to get a couple of those comments answered. In addition, Salt Brook, I know we can get the information regarding who owns ten, because it's in our Affordable Housing Plan, so that shouldn't be too hard. I wanted to clear up, there was some things that I've seen recently online, and it didn't hit me until I asked Rosie for our committee minutes for our council. And there was, there were some rumblings that the Republican council, we, we took off, or we, we ended this organization or this committee called Silver Summit. The Republicans don't like seniors, and they, they stopped the Silver Summit Committee, helping seniors. We don't help seniors. And I thought to myself, you know, I gotta go back to the minutes, because I am pretty sure that I did some research on this, and I, I think it was Michelle's idea in the committee to remove the, the committee. And so I, I did a little bit of research, I read our committee minutes. And so, Michelle, I would ask that we take a look at this in admin. So I sent a note to you, Council President, and Rosie, and I said, the Silver Summit Senior Citizens Advisory Board, on three-ten, Councilwoman Michelle Cammelson and Mayor Fagan met with Sage and the previous director. They were advised that Sage was looking to increase its outreach and interact with more seniors. Sage is a nonprofit group in our town, they do amazing things. Discussion regarding whether to consider dissolving the Silver Summit Senior Board or find someone to drive it. Consensus of administrative policies to have Cammelson solicit feedback from members of the committee to determine whether or not this board should be disbanded. While the board had great intentions, it was never able to execute more recently. After meeting with Sage, consensus was that they can better serve our seniors by connecting the Department of Community Programs with Sage. Administrative policies felt the city should have a council liaison assigned to Sage to maintain collaboration between Sage and other senior citizen geared organizations. So, I would ask that our next council meeting, we put that liaison to Sage as originally intended from those meetings. So I just wanted to dispel the rumors that the Republicans don't want to help the seniors, and when I went back into my notes, I remembered that we had all of those conversations, and we just have to arrange for a council liaison to Sage, which I don't think we ever did. That was that.
Other comments? Oh, sorry.
Just a couple more. I'll be quick, I know it's late, I just have two more things. I have asked New Jersey Transit to power wash the front of the train station. It looked horrendous, and I wanted to thank New Jersey Transit for getting that accomplished. I took some before and afters, but I think it's something that we can, you know, meet with them and on a regular basis, get that power washed. And the dog park is great, just clean up after your dogs. We have, we have bags there, just try to be diligent around picking up after your dogs. And thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and for the city staff for working so hard.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Toth.
Oh, yeah, I'll try to be brief, and I may have to repeat it in a few weeks, but first I want to thank you, Councilmember Smallwood, for, for telling Jonathan Liang's story. They're my neighbors. They're trying to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they're a bit under seventy thousand. So anyone who is feeling particularly generous, that, that's a really good thing. But I'm really here with my finance hat back on. And as it's been mentioned, although we've just taken steps to fund this year's capital budget, we're already look, working on next year's, so mark your calendars for the capital budget workshop, which will be here in council chambers on December tenth. And turning to next year's operating budget, the city is going to face significant challenges with health insurance premiums. Residents may be aware that the state health benefits plan, to which Summit has belonged, is in a death spiral. Our premiums have increased more than fifty-one percent in the past three years, and we're looking at a thirty-seven percent increase next year. That translates to almost an additional one point nine million dollars in insurance premiums. So Megan Champney Quezalite, our Human Resources Manager, has been working diligently to source alternatives, and we don't have great ones. This isn't an action item for us on council quite yet, but it does mean that next year's budget season is going to be rough, and I don't want anyone to be surprised about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toth. Councilwoman Cammelson.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, about Silver Summit, I don't know about any rumblings that were online, if there were any, and I didn't see, I didn't see them, but I do know that it came up at, at the forum, and what I heard Jacqueline Lacerena say was that this council disbanded it, and that's true. We, we, I've talked about it with the mayor, talked about it with council president, you were on admin committee with me, it came up that we had lost a lot of people on that committee, that they just weren't able to do it anymore, they weren't interested, so we were looking at, you know, different outreach. I've been, reached out to Sage a few times since then, and I've been having a problem connecting with her. But what I love about the statement about Silver Summit is Jackie didn't bother to see who was on the committee who disbanded it. She disagreed with it, she says I have a better plan. I haven't heard her plan, I would love to hear her plan, and I really like her independence that she doesn't care for some, from the same party or not. She will, she has disagreed with me, and she's disagreed with Claire. And I do have an announcement to make on an upcoming event. On Friday, September twenty-sixth, Summit Public Art will host its twenty-third annual fundraiser, an evening of anonymous art at Twin Maples on Springfield Avenue from seven to ten p.m. To purchase tickets and get information, go to summitpublicart.com. This will be a unique event featuring one hundred artworks donated by artists at all levels of their careers, from the famous to the newcomers. Artist names will be revealed after purchases are made. Each piece is one hundred dollars. For those who are unaware, Summit Public Art is a 501(c)(3) that operates fully on private donations and grants with the mission to bring public art to Summit in both our downtown and our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Other comments from council?
Council President.
Yeah, Councilman Boyer.
Because I have to address the chair of the Summit Housing Authority, I almost forgot about this. So, have you, have you ever been in a situation where you're not being heard? Like, where you're just not heard? Like where you, you talk and talk and talk, you complain, you do whatever, but you're not, you're like invisible? What, what the chairman just came up and did was disappointing. Like, you're not listening to the residents there, they're not being heard. You're just, you're, you're saying the same thing over and over again, go to the office and report, yeah, they've been doing that. Then you just, the person just came up two weeks ago and cried. Then you just, the person just came up two weeks ago and cried up here. I just went to the Summit Housing Authority at, at the senior building and talked to a bunch of people. And then, and it's like, you come up and you double down on them. It's, it's just like, I just don't get it. I mean, if you, you join a committee that interacts with people that are vulnerable, elders, you know, living in low-income housing, you gotta meet them where they are, and you gotta listen to them. Listen to them. I mean, that, that's the failure of this. You're not hearing them. And I'm disappointed with what I heard today. Thank you, Council President. I needed to say that because I know some of those folks are watching.
Thank you very much. Councilman Pulowski.
Super quick. I have a recollection that Silver Summit was created to address issues exacerbated by COVID, and various groups like Sage and Shield and whomever else assists the seniors in Summit created it so that they could coordinate, and I know they did a lot of really great work delivering groceries and stuff like that to our seniors. And I also have a recollection that the reason it was disbanded was because, in addition to a lack of interest, that that emerged, the COVID emergency was over. So, look, if there's an appetite to do it, and we can help our seniors more, I'm all for it. But just to give a little bit of the history, at least as I recalled it, and I can't remember if that was from a closed session or if we even maybe said it from the dais. If anybody else remembers, let us know. But that's it.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, I'm going to wrap up, I'll try to be brief. First off, I wanted to just, I've been thinking a lot, there's obviously the last several months, probably several years, you know, we have been dealing with a lot more drainage issues all throughout our community. And you can name it on, you can blame it on overdevelopment, you can blame it on more violent storms, combination of them. But the, the fact of the matter is, we were hearing a lot of this, and, and we have to get a handle on, on all of that. And my suggestion would be like, this, this can't be a little spot project. We have a master plan review coming up, probably next year, that the planning board's going to have to, to jump on. And my suggestion would be that we create a subcommittee on that master plan. I know some people have been involved in the master plans in the past. I know Kevin, you were, you were intimately involved in the last one. Where we really look at drainage holistically in town, where we look at our development codes, our lot coverage area, our, you know, impervious surface rules, where we look at where we can invest in infrastructure and things like that. We, we really have to take a really comprehensive look at that. And the master plan is the perfect place to really begin to have that discussion. So I, I hope that we can do something with that for next year. Second thing is, Councilman Pulowski mentioned I should mention it. I did hear some comments today about talking to us about the school budget. I thought maybe I had just fallen asleep because it was late and I was dreaming, because we don't do the school budget here. We just don't. We do the municipal budget. That's 20% of your tax bill. School budget is done by the Board of Ed. If you want to come up and campaign for your great ideas, do it at the Board of Ed. That's who creates the, the school budgets. And we have an oversight responsibility, three, the, the mayor, two members of council sit with two members of the Board of Ed on the Board of School Estimates. That concurs their budget. They, and, but they don't make it. And this year, it was brought up again, I'd just like to thank the mayor and Kevin and Delia for pushing back on a budget that was just, had no basis in the reality of what our residents are going through around cost of living increases. A 9% tax hike on the school budget, that's on, they're on planet Mars. So they should have pushed back. But they pushed back in a way you need to sharpen your pencils. That is the exact message that they should have given to the school board. And if you wanted to have it, them do something different, go to the Board of Ed and talk about how the budget should be done there. Because we don't do it here. I don't know how many times I have to say that to people. That's the Board of Ed's job. Let's see. Third point, Councilman Smallwood has been leading the charge. I'm going to pass it over to you before I make my fourth, fourth point. We have an event on the 29th.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. The Summit PAL has always had a golf outing, this the largest fundraiser to provide funding for all of their events that they do throughout the year, such the Easter egg hunt, the dog show, the, the pet show, and also the fishing derby. And this year, the golf outing is on Monday, September 29, at Watchung Golf Club, Watchung Valley Golf Club. And their PAL Citizen of the Year is being awarded to Jim Davidson for his 27 years of, of being Summit's coach, probably one of the most successful coaches in the country, is also part of the New Jersey Hall of Fame coaches, and it's, I couldn't think of anyone who was more well-deserving than Jim to receive the PAL Citizen of the Year. Fortunately, because Jim is so successful and has coached so many students, student athletes, that the golf outing is actually sold out. However, the dinner, dinner and reception and award ceremony is still available, and it's on the PAL, summitpal.org website, if you'd like to join us for, for dinner and the, the award ceremony for Jim.
Thank you. All right. So my last point, and I know it's super, super late, and I want to thank the Chief, Tammy, and you, in particular Rosie, but all of you for, for staying, and everyone in the audience as well, before I wrap up. Last, last meeting, after last meeting, I got a phone call from Councilwoman Toth, who was very upset, which is fine, about the, some of the comments at the end of the meeting, and said, you know, it was, it was more like a Republican rally than a council meeting. And I take my role as Council President very, very seriously. It's an honor to be Council President, to serve Summit, and to be supported by all the people on the dais to do that role. And, and so, I, and I take it seriously. So I said, you know what, I'm going to, I'm going to relook at all the tapes. I hear your concern, and I'm going to, and I'll listen, and if I need to talk to Councilwoman Pulowski, I will do so. And I'll call you back tomorrow. And so I did. Councilman Pulowski, you do talk a lot. But, so, so I looked at it, and I wanted to respond to Claire, and so I called back. But between there and then, Claire had put out a Facebook post, you know, saying I should have stopped things and, you know, that I let it become a Republican rally, et cetera. And I'm like, well, I thought we were going to talk about that. But I don't know why that happened, but regardless, I just want to comment on, on what I watched. So I have had a conversation with our clerk, who's seen it, seen it all. And one of the things I've become very cognizant about is speaking for the city for policy when there's no consensus on what that policy should be. Because I'm only one person. We're all just one vote. We can't speak about policy until a majority of council people vote on it. Then it becomes city policy. Okay? So I think, you know, there was some talk about, you know, I know Delia was being honored, and I completely agree with everything that the mayor said that you've done on the, on the task force. And that seemed to kick things off. I don't know why we can't be gracious and say nice things about each other without it becoming political. We should be able to do that. I don't know why you can't give a little golf clap at a minimum when we do nice things for people. I guess it might be because, you know, everything gets viewed in a political lens, and that's kind of sad to me. I, I'm not angry about it, I'm just disappointed, I guess, that it's gotten to that. We should be able to say things. Now, specifically about Councilwoman Pulowski's stuff, he mentioned the, your Summit Together team in response to a Facebook post. But then he went on to talk about all these accomplishments that the majority had instituted. Now, you could look at that and think, oh, he's talking about Republicans, if you want to. But the reality is, almost every single one of the things that he spoke about were passed unanimously. They weren't passed by a Republican majority, they were passed by a council majority, including everybody up here. And that's kind of how I look at things. That's how we should look at it. We all work together as a team. And we have our differences, and, you know, there can be some spirited debates, there were definitely a few tonight. We don't agree on everything, but when we vote, I keep, I jot it all down, I could go back the last year, we agree on 99% of everything we, we vote on. That's the council majority. That's the thing that I care about. And when Councilman Pulowski speaks about it, you can either look at it and say, he's not including me, but you remember that you voted for it. He is including you. And you should be proud of the things that we've done. I certainly am, and we've all been part of it. And until we start to think that way, we have to end this tribalism. We're all doing this together. And that's what's super, super important. You know, I, I've said Claire does a great job with finance many, many times. But if you listen to the, you know, the echo chambers out there, they, you know, they hate what we've done with the budget. Claire's led the budget. I will, I will thank her again. If it, if it means that she gets a few more votes in a few years, you can use my, my comment to, to promote you. We should be doing that. She did a great job. And we need to do more of that. And we have to think that way. So, so that is kind of the way I'm thinking, and I get it, some people may view it differently, and everyone has the, are entitled to their opinion. But if we all are in it together, and as I said, we almost vote on everything unanimously, let's all own it. Because we're all up here doing the Ruts Right for Summit in our own way. And doesn't mean, again, we agree on everything, but we agree on most things, which I think is pretty special. And that is the end of my comment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Sweet for that.
All right. All in favor?
Second.
We are adjourned.